All right, thank you so much. Today is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. The time is 6:00 p.m. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, can you have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Bucelato?
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you so much. At this time, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. ... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number five is Call to the Public. Is there anybody online or in the audience that would like to speak at this time? I'll go ahead and close the first call to the public. There will be a second call to the public. Item 6A, we do have a presentation that we are going to be presenting to Ms. Pecos Sonoris BB DeVries. At this time, I'm going to ask our council and Ms. Pecos to meet over at the platform over to the right. You are our fifth key to the city. Come on over here. This is an honor. This is such an honor, and you received such an amazing award. When you received the award, and I heard the name of it, I asked staff, I said, will you do like some background into what is this award? What does this mean? Do you want to talk a little bit about it before we go into it?
I don't know what it is.
Really?
I don't know.
Really? Okay, well, we're gonna talk about it. Where Pecos Sonoris BB DeVries was born to Shad BB and Sammy Joe BB, and they lived in a ranch in Oklahoma where she enjoyed ranch life. Whereas when Pecos was six years old, she received her first sewing machine and quickly mastered the skill. Whereas Pecos moved to Florence with her family in 2014 and quickly fell in love with the community and became a lifelong Florence resident. Carly DeVries, who was married in 2022. So whereas Pecos also had a dream of being an entrepreneur and in 2016 purchased the Adobe building located at 390 North Main Street, which is lovingly restored in 2018, moved her leather business into the building, and whereas Pecos, business savvy and marketing has turned the spotlight onto Florence, she has grown her business into an internationally brand, known brand with samples of her leather flowers. They have been in vogue, they've been on the runway in Paris, and she's bringing attention to our small town. Whereas Pecos Sonoris BB DeVries worked diligently to preserve Florence's independent Western spirit, displaying her products at rodeo venues on the national rodeo circuit. And whereas Pecos was named one of the top 25, 25 innovators by INO. That's the award I was talking about. You didn't know you received that award?
I did, but I didn't know that's what this was about.
You were in a magazine. It was all over the magazine. We had people calling town hall. Our local chamber director reached out and said, we have somebody amazing in our community. She's running a business here. And I said, I know exactly who that is. We've been to her business, and we see all the amazing things that she's doing on social media, and we're so glad that you're here. And we wanted to take a moment as a council to present you with... Are you ready for this? There's only five of these in the world, and you have the fifth one. This is a key to the town of Florence, and we want to thank you as a council for setting up your business here, being so innovative, everything that you've been working towards, and highlighting Florence in a positive light. We're proud of you, we're proud of your accomplishments, and we want you to keep doing great things.
Thank you. Oh, that's a lot. That's a lot of things.
Well, let's invite her family and friends up here. Let's take a whole big group picture.
Just to give a little bit more background, the award that she got was one of the 25 people under 25 in the Valley of Phoenix that are innovators in the business community. This year, I haven't heard the total number, but last year, there were over 500 people that were applicants for it. This year, I've not heard the total, but she was one of the finalists for the final 25 because of her business and how she's grown it throughout Phoenix and throughout the state of Arizona. So that's what it was for. There were a number of people. We recommend a number of businesses from Florence, and every once in a while, we do get an award, and this time, it happened for her. So that's what it was, 25 under 25 innovators in the Valley of Phoenix.
Thank you.
Now, we have the presentation of the annual comprehensive finance report for the fiscal year 2223 and the approval of the audit report for fiscal year 2223, Ms. Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. I'm happy to present Ben Herr from Fester Chapman to present our annual financial report. As you know, I sent all of you a financial report of all the town funds on a very simplified basis. It was quite lengthy, but it goes into a little bit of detail in common language of what we do in the finance department and how each of the funds are functioning. This report that's presented is very instrumental every time we go out for financing for the town or for investors that are looking at our town, or in general, for federal compliance, et cetera. Ben and Fester and Chapman and Ben and his staff do an outstanding job of assisting the town with the audit and preparation and coordinating everything that goes on. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Ben Herr from Fester Chapman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the councilmembers. My name is Ben Herr with Fester and Chapman, who had performed the audit of the financial statements of the town of Florence for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2023. Before I start the prepared presentation, I would like to start with extended our appreciations to the town managements, especially for the finance departments, for their support and assistance to the audit process. As you know, this is very lengthy and a very demanding process, and without their help, it would be really hard for us to complete this report. As she mentioned, that we actually have completed an audit and then issued the three reports, which you should have received. One is called annual comprehensive financial report, which is basically financial statements audit report for the financial statements. The second report is single audit reports, whenever the non-federal organization receives federal fundings over $750,000, and then that points the single audit required. So we actually perform the compliance testings on that major program selected, and that's the reports for that. Third report is report to the mayor and the town councils, another required mandatory report for the auditors, basically the tools for us to communicate what had happened during the whole audit process. The second part of the presentation is a brief financial overview from the audited financial statements. So first of all, so audit results summaries is for the financial statements audit that we issued a modified opinion, which means financial statements are presented fairly in all mature aspects in accordance with GAAP. The other things is included in this report is basically we did not noted any deficiencies, either mature weaknesses or significant deficiencies from our audit procedures for the financial statements. Second report, as I mentioned, is single report. We also, we have selected the major programs for the Assistant Listening Number, 21.227s, COVID-19 Corona Vite State and Local Recovery Funds. That program has been selected and tested for compliance required by the federal government. We did not identify any deficiencies, again, mature weaknesses or significant deficiencies for the non-compliance issues, and we did not have any internal controls over compliance for the major program we tested. Third report is, as I mentioned, is basically our communications to the mayors and the town councils and the reportings, what had happened during the audit process. This report includes any sensitive estimation and disclosures we were considering during our audit process. It's identified that pension liabilities, because it is using the heavy actuarial evaluations, and we also noted that allows for the doubtful accounts and the useful life estimation for the capital asset as a sensitive estimation and no disclosures. This report is also including if there was any difficulties encountered during the audit process, and then if there was any disagreements with the managements, we can happily report it back to you, there was none of that issues during the audit process. This is second part of the presentation, like I mentioned. This is a very high-level summary of financial overview from the audited financial statements. It reported that total of $246 million of total asset and deferred outflow, including the town's financial statements, then also reported 45 millions of the liabilities included in. Those liabilities is made out of like $25 million of long-term debt, $9 million of the non-current employee benefit, which is pension-related liabilities, and also $9 million of current payables. These numbers is a little bit higher than normals because of about $5 million is associated with unearned revenue. So COVID grants was received, but it has not been spent yet, so for the financial reporting purposes, we actually put it as liabilities. So total asset and liabilities is a result in town's net position of the $201 million. Out of that, $96.8 million is related to net investment in capital asset, and the $51 million is somewhat restricted by the grantors or outside external parties, and then that is remaining, that resulted in remaining $54 million of unrestricted net position. Financial overview, including the revenues during the 2023, total of $49.4 million of revenue were reported. Out of that, $12.6 million was from the charge for services, $10.9 million from state share revenue, $10.5 million sales tax, $3 million of property tax. That's a major composition of the town's revenue sources. This is expenses during the 2023. Total of $30 million of expenses was reported. $11.7 million roughly, 35% were related to the public safety functions. $6.9 million roughly, approximately 21% was spent for the general government, and the $2.2 million was culture and decorations, and the $2.1 million highway and street. This is basically financial trendings over the last five years. So pretty much on the left-hand side is showing the trend of revenues between 2019 through 2023, and then the right-hand side is for the expenses of the 2019, 2023. As you can see, the one on the top blue line is representing the charge for services revenue, which is a little bit trending up from the 2019, 2023s. What is really kind of outstanding in terms of the revenue movement was state shares tax revenue and shares tax revenue, as you can see, it's trending up from 2019. In terms of the expenses, expenses was kind of indicating pre-set expenses, but one associated with public safety, public safety expenses kind of jumped in 2023s, and there is general government revenue changes. So that is basically the financial overview.
Council, did you have any questions in regards to the financial overview?
Are there any councilmembers that have any questions or clarifications? No, Mr. Herr, thank you so much. It was very comprehensive and straightforward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to go ahead and thank Fester Chapman, and especially Mr. Ben Herr and his staff, also the town department directors, Jennifer Evans, who was instrumental in all of the grants and major project handling of the finances and recording things to make things much easier for our auditors, and then the finance staff who work very diligently every single day to ensure that they have accurate postings and they're reporting properly in each of their areas. I thank them very much.
Thank you. Item seven is our consent agenda.
Mayor, this item was for approval. Look at the second line.
Yeah, it wasn't noted that way on this one. My apologies. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the audit report for fiscal year 2222 through 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council.
Thank you. Item seven is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A, accept the annual expenditure limitation report for fiscal year 2223. B, approval of the December 4th and December 11th, 2023 town council minutes. C, receive and file the following board and commission minutes, Historic District Advisory Commission minutes of September 26th, 2023. D, accept the register of demands ending November 30th, 2023 in the amount of $4,312,416.65. E, adoption of the resolution of 1891-24, which is a resolution in the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, amending the town of Florence capital asset policy and procedures effective February 2nd, 2024. And F, approval of the lease agreement for Silver King Marketplace Suite 101 to Corey Eckenbarger, doing business as Florence Fudge Company. We did already approve item A, but we'll go ahead and do that again if I can have a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A is new business. Discussion approval, disapproval to approve the purchase of a 2018 Pierce Enforcer fire engine or like vehicle in an amount not to exceed $825,000, or authorize the town manager to arrange the purchase from another entity in an amount not to exceed $825,000. Chief Snyder.
Mayor, before you begin, I just wanted to let you know that the first portion of that suggested motion, that vehicle's no longer available because they have started a bidding war on that item. So we would only be looking at the "or" portion.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Chief Snyder, would you like to present anything at this time?
Sure, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This can be a little bit confusing. We talk about fire apparatus because they're typically all referred to as trucks and not clarified what exactly we're talking about. Just for clarification, we are close to receiving, I anticipate it this week or early this month, receiving the purchase of the tender that you purchased. We should be getting that at any time now. We're working with town management on the final specifications of a fire engine that you had already purchased. That should be approved this month, go into build, and we should receive that late this fiscal, May or June, depending on how quickly we finalize those specifications. That's a fire engine with hoses and pumps and water tanks. You also approved the purchase of a ladder truck. We just typically refer to that as a ladder. That's that $2 million purchase. It will go out to bid this year, and then it will likely take 18 to 24 months for the company to build and deliver that. Depending on how quickly they can put that together, it could potentially take longer. Right now, our frontline rigs, we have one fire engine and one ladder truck that are both in service. Those units are 10 and 12 years old respectively, and NAPA standard is that you run units for 10 years and then you put them out of service. Typically, you would run them as a frontline for five years, and then as a backup for five years, and then they would be out of service as a response vehicle or utilized in extreme cases of need. Those units are being serviced a great deal lately, and because of that, this request is coming forward to you tonight.
Councilmember Larson, and then councilmember Cortez.
So in relation to the actual line item, would you be looking to still purchase a 2018 Pierce Enforcer fire engine, or would you, were you just looking for a like vehicle? Because that first option you said is no longer available, so is this something that you still feel like you'd be able to move forward with in this fiscal year, or is this, you're not anticipating it's gonna be here by that point?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Larson, this was a vehicle that we found, it was in mint condition. The fire department that owned it had purchased it, only put 8,000 miles on it, and then put it up for sale. They were anticipating it taking six months to sell, but they had a lot of attention towards it, and now they've created a bidding war for that vehicle, so it's no longer available. So we're looking for a light-kind vehicle, fire engine of some sort.
Councilmember Cortez?
Yes, so it's the first meeting of the new year, and I clearly am not understanding what is in front of me. What are we, what are you asking us for here? Because there's reference to a $2 million engine, there's like reference to more than one thing, but then we're talking about $825,000. So will you just clarify for me real quick? What are you looking to purchase? And was it approved in the budget?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cortez, yes, that was kind of the clarifying question that becomes complicated. You have approved the purchase of three vehicles, a tender, a fire engine, and a ladder. This is an emergency approval purchase of a new fire engine not to exceed $825,000.
And is that part of the $2 million?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So just for clarification, this is not part of the $2 million. Is this $825,000, was it approved to be spent? Or are we being asked to, in addition to the three we already approved, to approve a fourth?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, because he just, I'm watching Becky because she's like giving me signals over here. So Becky, he's saying that we approved three vehicles, and he's asking for an emergency approval of a fourth vehicle at $825,000.
I prepaid a vehicle in 2022 for $735,000. That's the one that's waiting to be delivered in May or June. We approved a tender, and that has not been paid for yet. We're waiting for a delivery on it. We approved this year a $2 million fire engine, but that's going to take between 18 months and two years. So depending on whenever they go out to bid and the status of that, if we have to prepay it, we'll have to pay that money. But I will tell you, in reserve, I have still excise, unspent excise tax money that I need to spend, and this would qualify already to be spent. He is in an, basically what I feel is an emergency situation because he has only two vehicles that are old, they're 10 years and 12 years old. because he has only two vehicles that are old. They're ten years and twelve years old respectively, and they continue to have great big repair issues. So he's trying to get something in here that's newer to compensate for that. He, he'll use those vehicles as backup, but he needs something newer to get him to where he doesn't have to rely on those two vehicles, and we're spending a lot of money for repair and maintenance.
Okay, but after all is said and done, our fire department will technically have four new engine-type vehicles, ladder, water, all the different definitions that he gave. Once we get everything that is pre-ordered, soon to be delivered.
Yes.
Got to wait eighteen, twenty-four months. Eventually, we will have four new vehicles in our, that then will start the ten-year rotation of each vehicle should be replaced with it in about ten years.
Right.
Okay. So potentially in ten years, we could be replacing four vehicles at the same time again, roughly?
Well, you have to see what, what year he's going to be replacing, because this type of money is not a lot of money for a fire engine. So this one that he was going to replace with was a twenty-eighteen. So that would already be within ten years, or less than ten years, in twenty, what is it, twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-eight, it would already be at the ten-year mark. So he would have to replace that one a little bit faster, depending on the utilization. He's, they've been stretching these vehicles out anywhere from ten to fifteen years, but they just require so much maintenance.
Okay, but the money's there.
It's there.
We're not, we're not going to like fall short.
Even if we had to utilize some of that two million dollars that we budgeted, that's okay. We can rebudget in the next year because we're saving with that other money that we have.
All right, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Garcia, and then Mr. Men, Vice Mayor Mendoza and Councilmember Neal.
I, I just want to add that while we're talking about this item, we should go ahead and thank our surrounding communities, because when I've been in the shop, we have had our surrounding communities lending us their vehicles so that we can supply support to the citizens of Florence. And I think sometimes it takes those even outside of our community to make sure that we are able to provide safety measures for our citizens. And I just want to thank both the fire department that has the relationship with those communities to be able to bring on their trucks, to be able to make sure we're able to provide that safety mechanisms, but I also want to thank those communities. Thank you.
Thank you. You said no. Councilmember Neal?
I was just wondering, is there any way, because when I was reading the packet, and it said that we were waiting to come to council to bid on this vehicle, we've got to do something to where we can get council together beforehand so we don't lose the next vehicle waiting for us to vote for it, if it's something that's needed, especially for fire, police.
What we're asking for is for you to give us authorization to purchase, and then we can bring it back with a ratification, if you like, and bring it back to the ratification, show you what the vehicle looks like, everything.
What Councilmember Neal is saying is, in the future, if an opportunity like this comes up to where as a vehicle is
Up for sale.
Being put up for sale, and we have a need for it, and we have the funding for it, we want to call an emergency meeting so we can move forward quickly. So this way, we don't end up in the current situation to where now you have money and you have no vehicle to purchase.
And, and like the chief said, there was many communities who felt just like us, and that's how the bidding war started. And even when our packets were published, they were up beyond this amount by a significant amount. So it's, it's a difficult thing.
So we can get out of, ahead of it next time, but we all know as council that if we find another vehicle in that greater shape, we just bid on it, and maybe we avoid it, and we can just buy it right out.
Ms. Jimenez. Would it be off to say, you know, go up to nine hun, like up to nine hundred thousand dollars with the money that's in that account? This way, just in case we end up, because I understand how costly these vehicles are. I also understand the need within the community and the services and how we have been borrowing from the surrounding municipalities around us.
I would say that you would probably want to do something like that, to give them a budget to work within, dependent upon it coming back to the council again. And if we need to do an emergency meeting, that would be fine, but we do not want to proceed unless council tells us to go ahead with this, dependent upon the condition of the vehicle, the year of the vehicle, what kind of condition it is. And so we, we could have that flexibility. If you wanted to amend it to say up to nine hundred thousand, that would be fine. Either way, I've saved, we're going to be saving money in Fund Eleven as it is by moving stuff over into our twenty-twenty-one excise tax money. So between the two, we could probably juggle it and fund the vehicle. It's just what council prefers to do. We're willing to work with whatever you tell us to do.
And from my input only, I, I don't feel that it would need to come back in front of me or us. If you want it to, we can. But I know that sometimes these items are timely, and I do know that we're not going to purchase something that's old, has high mileage, is having any issues, because we already have that with some of our vehicles that are twelve to fourteen years old to where we should have.
I think we, Chief wrote within the agenda item itself that it would go back to the town manager for consideration. So if that's something that we want to do, that's the appropriate place to place this then.
That would be acceptable. Councilmember?
If that's the case, then I think we should put a cap on the max amount to be spent.
Yes.
And anything over that needs to come back to council. But on top of that, I would encourage everybody to be forward-thinking, because this is information that would have been great to know during budget, which was just six months ago, and I know like you weren't here at that time, so no fault on you or anything. But if we know that our trucks are, are getting to that age, then we should start being proactive about a year or two before, before they service out, since they're taking up to two years to do. Because I know even the police vehicles are taking a long time to get in right now. So it would just, it would be nice to take all that into consideration, so we don't find ourselves in this mess in, in ten years again.
Councilmember, we had fully expected our vehicle that we had prepaid to be in August. That did not happen. We had no control over that. So there was no way that our fire chief at that time was going to put in for another vehicle. Plus, we had the tender that we were waiting for. That was supposed to come right away, and it didn't happen. So there's no way we can balance this other than to come before council and ask you for consideration on this.
Right. There was a delay in production, as I understand from reading.
And that seems to be the norm now, especially with the police. That's what I'm trying to say, is now that we know that this could happen, it would probably be good to start staggering them, like one year, get this vehicle, you know, a year before, to start staggering them, so we don't need four new vehicles all right now, which is what situation we're in, just in case this happens again, because it seems to be the norm now with production of vehicles.
Yes, I agree.
Any other comments?
Crazy assumption, but I'm going to assume that before you bid on a vehicle, you've, we've done an inspection. We know, like, as we're talking about raising the dollar amount, saying, giving you a little bit wiggle room to negotiate. When you negotiate, you've already done your research on the vehicle, and we know that we're purchasing a vehicle that is worth the value that we're paying for it, and we're not overpaying for a vehicle, which right now seems to be the trend, but that's a correct assumption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Cortez, that's very true. We don't want to get into a bidding process, so we're staying away from those processes and do full inspections. There are some brand-new vehicles that are just line vehicles that companies make. We're looking at a couple of those. But we do have some options that we would follow exactly what you said on that process.
Perfect.
There are no additional comments or questions. With that, we need a motion, and in your motion, either keep the eight twenty-five, or you can increase to up to nine hundred. Either one is fine.
I'd make a motion to approve item eight-A, to approve the purchase, not to, for a fire engine or like vehicle not to exceed nine hundred thousand, or authorize the town manager to arrange a purchase of another utility or another entity in the amount not to exceed that nine hundred thousand.
And doesn't have to come back before council.
And it doesn't have to come, it doesn't have to come back to us. The town manager can.
I second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion approval, disapproval of a professional services agreement with Architecton for the multi-generational center pre-design phase in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred, Mr. Chrisalis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. At the last work session, we discussed a, a path moving forward to keep our future multi-generational community service building moving forward, project moving forward. And so tonight, I kind of want to walk through some of the steps in a little bit greater detail that we discussed the last time. So commu, we, the Public Works Department worked with the Community Services Department to kind of understand some of the needs that they've been hearing over, over the years. And so community members have expressed a desire for additional services that will require additional floor space. The desires could be accommodated through a multi-generational center. The construction facility would provide a chance to create a custom space to fit the specific needs of floors, residents of all ages. One of the questions that came up the last time was specific to that, is do we have to do exactly what Casa Grande did? And the answer is no. So we want to make sure that throughout this presentation, we understand that this is a completely fresh, white piece of paper for everyone to kind of have their input on as far as aesthetics, as far as sizing, as far as programming. So that'll kind of be throughout the presentation, and furthermore, we'll offer a variety of programming that suits the needs and interest of an entire family. One of the things that came up during Director King's presentation was about accessibility and exclusivity. And that has been brought up by our community members as well. And so there's a diverse set of programming opportunities that the town would have. Some of these might be intergenerational activities, senior services, dedicated spaces for teens, out-of-school programming, larger gym space, fitness classes, special interest classes, and just more public rental space. From the, from as a staff member who has to book a meeting, like specifically for our A.D.A. Roundabout projects, it's interesting to see how often their rooms are already rented far out into the future. So we have a greater need for more rental space for the community as well. So this building could offer additional space for that. Something that was discussed very high level the last time was the method that we would deliver this project, which is a construction manager at risk. And so I guess one of the things that, that should be discussed is, I guess, the, the positive of such a thing. You do not normally see on vertical projects a process of design, bid, build, that you would see on a roadway project. There's too many complications on vertical projects. There's so many different disciplines, and as part of that, you would just see an abnormal amount of like change orders as you go through the project. And so that's not a, a traditional delivery method in there. So the advantages of a construction manager at risk is that you bring that contractor on from the very beginning, and so they help you with constructibility, they help you estimating costs. They kind of explain to you as you're making decisions, maybe some of the implications of the decisions based on their experience levels. And as part of that, they are helping you fine-tune at each level of design a guaranteed maximum price. You'll be hearing a lot about the expression, abbreviation, GMP. That's Guaranteed Maximum Price throughout this project. And the town, and I don't think that the specific council has, has done a project like this in a little bit. I think the Community Services Building in fifteen was a design build. So the town does have experience with these types of contracts. So we discussed at the last council, at the work session, about some of the benefits of direct section, direct selection. So want to go over those again. So we have known projects, clients, clients and references, and the town can select a firm that specializes in parks and recreational design, multi-generational or community services, community centers. And so one of the questions that I had early on, both for Director King as well as Architecton, was just simply, what is the difference between a community service, a community center as well as a recreational center, as well as a multi-generational center? And they're all basically very much the same thing. The multi-generational is obviously trying to combine the different demographics and ages and bring those all together as a, as a family-oriented, but you see the same type of programming in community service. So those words will kind of be used, utilized interchangeably moving in the future. The firm's style is already known, and that the timing will not delay the project. So some of the things that we looked at was the reputation. We called multiple other communities who'd completed these types of projects in the recent timeframe. We spoke to some of the contractors that utilized the construction manager at risk process. And then we looked at, again, the performance of similar projects in there. So we spoke to people who actually completed those projects recently to see how the staff felt like the project ended up turning out, both from a project manager, constructibility, as well as a staff perspective. Since the last meeting, probably glossed over this a little bit, that we have separated out the pre-design services for the actual design services. So there will be two contracts on this year. We're bringing an architect on to immediately work with all the different disciplines, specifically the public outreach component, which is all part of the pre-design. And then as part of that process, which we'll discuss in a minute, three months in, we will actually be formulating an RFQ for the selection of an architect to finish the project. And the advantages of that is, quite simply, is we don't have all the programming in mind. So it'd be very difficult to come up with an actual architectural fee today when it could either go down or it could go up. And so it didn't make sense. So after speaking to other communities, several other communities, I think we spoke to five different communities, they all suggested that this was the method that they prefer to use and have utilized as a two-step process. So afterwards, somewhere at the end of March, we will have another RF, an RFQ go out, and the selection during that, and like I said, we'll discuss a little bit more of that process. But they have been separated out. This is compliant with, again, the state laws as for professional services. Through staff's research, this slide kind of speaks at length as why we ended up deciding to recommend a ward of contract for Architecton. There's approximately, I think, twenty-one different projects on this list, and they have completed approximately thirty projects on, in the recent history of some of these projects. These are all very, all very high level. Again, you see multiple projects from Grand Canyon, Arizona State, City of Tempe, Morana, Owatuki, City of Phoenix, City of Maricopa, on and on, Coolidge, the Casa Grande project. And a couple of pictures of some of the, the prominent projects, Tumbleweed Recreational Center, Desert Foothills YMCA, which my family has all attended, beautiful facility. Desert Foothills YMCA, which my family has all attended, beautiful facility, Rio Verde Recreational Center, Morana Aquatic and Recreation Center, as well as the Copper Sky Multi-Generational So, going through some of the process, we discussed the last time, we have a pre-design...
Recording in progress.
The schematic design, or SDs, design development, contract documents, CDs, bidding, contract administration, and then essentially the post occupancy of the, of the building itself. Again, for all the people who may have not attended the work session, so the market analysis is where we look at some of the constraints, whether that be our demographics, whether that be facilities in the, in the nearby area, which could be fitness centers, it could be the facilities at Anthem that maybe not necessarily are public to everyone, but they are a facility for the people in Anthem, that will be looked at. And it also looks at national recreational trends. The thing that probably is the most important part of the pre-design is the public outreach. So, we'll be reaching out both, I guess, electronically, as well as hosting design charrettes, where we will look at. So, I guess nationally, it is looked at that having just one public outreach medium is not effective. You'll get a certain audience heavily attend this, but maybe not so much that. And so, we'll be looking at both of those. Programming is what type of services that we'll be offering. So, again, as part of that public outreach, we are trying to extract that information that best suits the community that we serve. Based on that amount of square footage, we're going to be looking at sites that will facilitate that building footprint, if you will. So, some, if we end it with maybe sub forty thousand versus sub seventy thousand square foot facility, that could impact the facilities, the, the actual site that we're going to use. And then, the operational analysis, as previously discussed, that will be your O and M costs, that will be your staffing costs, your electrical costs, just ongoing costs. Like I said, a lot of times, that kind of gets lost, that everybody's so excited about a project, that they have that fund in what the Town of Florence calls Fund 11. That's your one-time capital cost, not realizing how much it costs to maintain this building year after year after year, including the staffing costs. The pre-design is looked to take approximately eight months. And so, the public outreach market analysis is approximately three months. After that point, during that visioning programming process, we will be looking at, again, doing an RFQ, yeah, an RFQ for the actual architectural services through a CEMR process. Site analysis slash site selection, and then conceptual designs. This is a very comprehensive, this is another thing that staff spent some time interviewing different municipalities and trying to figure out how much of this pre-design do we put into the project? So, when you look through some of this, it may feel a little duplicative in the thought of, isn't that really part of the design process? And the answer is, it can be. It can be. What we find by interviewing other municipalities is that they wish that they had incorporated some of this early on because it affected the budget later on by not evaluating some of that upfront. So, we will have architectural services as part of this, that public outreach component that we just discussed. There'll be a civil engineering firm that will look at some of the preliminary costs for the site, for land acquisition, surveys, G and D, utility plans for the onsite as part of this. So, this will help us right upfront determine a base price that we will utilize when we actually select an architectural firm. Landscape architect, mechanical engineering, kind of has a unique ring to it. We're not designing a bridge, we're not designing a metal building per se. The mechanical engineers, your, your HVAC, your plumbing, all those kind of things that are utilized as calculations. A conceptual, a structural engineer. And then, something really important to the project is cost estimating. They will bring on a specific cost estimator to determine as we are looking at some of those programming costs, how, how that will impact, again, that floor space, how much square footage is needed for the building. The pre-design phase, we have a cost proposal for three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and we've asked for a ten percent contingency. And then, the design phase, we, a percentage based off the value of the project there. Again, I want to, I want to stress that both from an aesthetics, from a floor plan to a, a programming base, this is a clean slate of paper. The town has a unique opportunity, quite honestly, going through this once before, for the City of Maricopa to make a, a really large impact in the community as far as what services are being offered, as well as a catalyst in the Territory Square area architecturally, investment, providing infrastructure in the area. I've also brought two of the, the partners, President of Architecton, for any questions. And at this point, I would like to ask John, Mr. Kane, to come up and kind of speak to some of, maybe some of the unique things that he sees in this project and just some of the projects that he's done.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Yeah, these are our favorite type of projects. These really are the projects that make a difference in a community. And one of the things that are really fun is to try to figure out what are the unique salient aspects of each community that we designed for. So, we came a couple hours early and started getting a feel, but there's, there's a lot of rich history and architectural heritage that we'll be investigating and researching. But I think the, the notion that this kind of project, as Chris mentioned, brings the entire community together of all ages, of all groups. And one of the fun parts about this phase is, is that outreach and the amount of different ways we try to do outreach to make sure that we talk to as many of your residents and of your community members as possible. Everybody has opinions on these kind of projects, and it's really important to get all that documented and understood. And then, working with our market analysis person, we bring Ken Ballard in, who we've done this with all over the, the state, to, to strike the balance of the economics and all the desires. There's a lot of things that we're going to find that we want, but then also helping the town analyze what can be afforded and what makes sense for your community specifically. And that's, it's a lot of fun, and it's a lot of, I think, opportunities for the community to come together and, and design something that they are proud of. And I think that's what we really are looking forward to with this project. Thank you very much.
So, in conclusion, again, we are asking for an approval for the award of contract to Architecton in the amount of four thirty-nine nine hundred. Not to exceed four thirty-eight nine hundred. With that, are there any questions for either myself or Architecton in general?
Council questions, comments? Feel like we have a lot of discussions.
I have one, but I'll hold it for all the members.
Okay. Councilmember Larson?
I just wanted to say that your, the work that you have completed in the past is amazing, and I'm really looking forward to what design you will bring to our community or what that will look like. I do think that you're gonna, we'll have a lot of discussion in our community, good, bad, and otherwise regarding what's needed. I know we've got those studies and I hope, that have been completed in the past, and I hope those are transferred to you, so you have that history as well. But yeah, so I'm very excited to see what you bring to Florence or what you, what project design you come up with, because everything that you've presented is fantastic, so.
Thank you.
And to the left, any questions or comments? All right. I anticipated a little bit more. Go ahead, Mr. Salas.
One thing that I didn't mention, because I didn't get into the specifics of some of the subcontractors on this, one of the things that probably should be mentioned to address what Councilwoman Larson just said, is the fact that the, the person that was involved in all of our planning efforts, Jay Hicks and Dig Studio, is actually the landscape architect on this project. And so, we'll have some history kind of going from the last time that we had a planning effort on this project to actually the pre-design services, which I thought was really important. We can't necessarily require a certain sub to be selected, but through Architecton, they kind of interviewed staff and said, do you have some preferences in some of these areas? And it's good to know. And so, when, when Dig Studio did the last update, we looked at all the documents in my, in my presentation, the first North End Framework Study, the update, the Territory Square zoning district, all those went into that, and all those documents will be sent over tomorrow morning.
Also, that does include the park analysis that was completed. What year was that? Do you remember? Twenty seventeen, eighteen?
Yeah.
Lisa, you probably remember, where they did a study on all of the parks and what services were lacking in what areas and where this, so there's going to be a lot of discussion. I just hope that you're getting the full picture when you're sort of diving into this.
I would, as I'm sitting here and I'm watching Director King over there, I would like to, since this is really going to be a lot of your area, because it's a community building that's going to involve a space for the community.
Recording in progress.
We got to figure this out. That and the lights, because that's driving me nuts, too. I would like to hear from you and make sure that you are getting your input in, because this is your area of expertise as far as the programming and the type of spaces that we need and where we're lacking and all of that. I mean, Chris is going to be great, I'm sure, at making sure what his department covers is done. But at the end of the day, this is a community building that you're going to be the director of this building, so I want to make sure that we are getting a lot of input from you and your staff and that we're making sure that we're listening to you guys.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember recorders, the, the input that I'm providing is ongoing right now. Mr. Salas has taken the lead on the architect and the logistics with that, with his expertise in building, construction. We'll be working tandemly together throughout this project, even past the, the construction pieces where we're talking in bulk about programming and some of the survey results, et cetera. I think my input and my staff's input is going to be vital for those conversations. We really are excited to get the results from the community surveys and outreach that we're expecting a lot of conversations about. So, I expect to have a lot of those conversations with my staff and to bring back recommendations to the architect based on that as well. So, I'll have a strong voice in, in the programming, in the spaces, some of the industry challenges that are happening with my peers in other towns and cities. So, I'll bring a lot of that information to the table as well. So, I appreciate that for sure.
Well, and the only reason why I even bring you up and ask is because I have worked on projects before where the people who should have been a part of the conversation somehow get lost because they maybe don't have the expertise of the actual architectural part of it, but they have the expertise and the day-to-day working knowledge of what is our current building lacking? Why did we outgrow it two months into it being open? You know, does knitting seem to be the class that everybody wants, or is it yoga? Like, you're the one who has that expertise. And so, although the architecture is very important and the, the prettiness and all that stuff is really important, what's most important is that the building is going to function in the manner that we need it to function as far as who's going to be in that building every day occupying it. And that's as simple as the utility closet. How big does it need to be? What is the complaint that, you know, the people have when they go to get the mop bucket out? What is, like, all of that is what you deal with every day. And so, that's why I'm making sure that it's stressed that you need to be part of this conversation every day so that you are able to voice what our staff lives in every day and we can ensure that this building is more than just pretty, that it actually is functional for our needs the day it's finished and hopefully carry us into some expansion so that we don't grow out of it two months after we open, which is not a bad thing, but it's expensive when you have to keep up, you know, keep expanding. So, I appreciate your hard work and your input in this.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember recorders, the, the amount of discussions that we'll have on that is going to be exhaustive. Everywhere from the temperature control for the IT closet to the most maintenance-friendly type of facility, how long will the windows take to clean? How often do we need to do that? That type of thing. We don't want to spend a lot of maintenance money. We don't want to have less storage space than we need. We don't have more storage space than we need. So, there's a lot of considerations on the conversations, so I do appreciate that.
And I want to add, Mr. King, just a few more items. When we're looking at this, because we have all been advocates of growing, growing smartly, providing opportunities for our community to engage, one of the speaking points that was mentioned earlier in the presentation was a reference to, you know, the, the Anthem Community Centers that other residents don't have access to. That really does get under my skin. And here's the reason why. The reason why is I was on our council when we built the Aquatic Center and the library in 2014, and we're coming upon our 10-year celebration, which I hope we're planning something. When that was built, we had ideas such as, you know, what about an indoor pool component? What about a lazy river going around it? How can we merge all areas of our community to come together to participate? But at that time, that conversation was so focused and so driven on, we want to build what is already here. And I don't want that to be the conversation. I want it to be, what are we doing to bring our community together? What are we doing to provide activities and opportunities that everybody can engage in? I also want you to be mindful that, yes, there is the Anthem community, but the pickleball courts are locked in the Anthem community, the tennis courts are locked in the Anthem community, the softball courts, the baseball fields, they're locked. So, unless you go during the hours that their facility is open to take a key out and return that key before the facility closes, you do not have access, even as a resident. So, I want us to be mindful that when we're providing parks and recreation, programming, services, activities, facilities, that we're being inclusive and bringing our community together. I also, I also appreciate the conversation we had earlier on what can we do to increase participation among our youth in engaging in the fitness center downtown. And we have some ideas that we talked about, and I'm looking forward to having those come to council, so this way we can have extended opportunities for that participation to be utilized.
It is a great conversation. Thank you, Mayor. The larger conversation really is, how do we use all of our facilities that we own as assets and programming? What programming models do we have in those where we don't have service gaps, we don't have overfilled classes or, or underutilized facilities? So, all those conversations are very important to this project.
Any other questions, comments? All right. With that, we do need a motion.
Make a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Architecton for the multi-generational center pre-design phase in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number C is... Item number C is ordinance number 731-24. This is discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances, Chapter 150, Technical Code, Section 150-300B, Addendum and Alternatives to the Technical Codes, deleting subsection R903.2.31, Group E, Providing for Separability and Declaring an Emergency, Jennifer Piel Davis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Attached to your agenda on the very last page, that is provided, you'll find the codified amendment, R, Section 903.2.31, Group E. It is amended, condition one, to read as follows. Fire area exceeds zero square footage. It is the recommendation to remove it and put it back to what the International Fire Code has as the standard of exceeding 12,000 square feet.
Are there any questions or comments on this?
Yeah. Here's my issue. And Mr. Harmer, the new help, who has graciously provided us with his services again, has been through this with us many times. And I am tired of staff bringing me code to change because the last time staff brought it to me, they recommended something that wasn't suitable for our town. And as I know you are finding out, since you have come here, we are very protective of our businesses and our building owners. And our buildings, we want them all to be safe, but we also want to be flexible and ensure that everybody is given the opportunity to run a business. So we don't always do things the way everybody else does. But I'm tired of this conversation because we spent a very long time going through codes and ensuring what we thought we were doing in the best interest of everybody. Safety, our buildings, the people who are going to be occupying those buildings. And here I sit again to have this same conversation. So either we need to figure out how to have this conversation wholly the first time, or we need to figure out where the disconnect is between staff and council when it comes to codes. Because I'm sure you're going to get tired of coming up here, having to present to us yet again another code that you would like for us to change. I'm getting tired of having to then either say yes or no, or spend another hour talking about something that I spent three months talking about a couple years ago. So that's my request, is you're asking us to do this. Have we taken the time to consider how this code impacts all of our businesses? Is this code going to then set a precedence for the next business? Are we going to have to then go back and say, okay, well, now this, it's not an educational building, but it's a retail building, or it's an office building? Have we done an in-depth look again at what we are going to have to change? Because I don't want to keep having this conversation. We're going to set codes, and we're going to stick to our codes, and we're going to stick to our guns, and we're all going to follow the same rulebook, and we're all going to follow the same opinion of what codes mean, because we all know that codes are up to discretion of who's reading it sometimes. And I wish Mr. Allen was here because he was part of that conversation, and I know that he, too, has stepped in and is lending his services to the town. So we have people that have been here for a very long time and had these conversations. But I, as a council member, am tired of having a conversation about codes and ordinances that we've already discussed at length to only find out that rather staff misled us, or we just didn't grasp the concept of what we were doing and the importance of it. So more education, I don't know. Maybe Mr. Harmer can help us figure out what we need to do so that we don't have to keep having this conversation. Because I'm really, I'm getting frustrated. It's confusing for a business owner. Every time they turn around, the code is different for one person versus the other, or we change it. It's a frustrating conversation. It's going to make it hard for you to do your job, because you're not going to know, well, what is council going to support? What is council not going to support? This is what it says today, but it might change tomorrow. I would like for all of us to be able to move forward and know that what is in front of us is what we are going to follow and not continue to change codes. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Sense.
So I'm going to let Mr. Harmer, and I have something else that I want to say after you. So, Mr. Harmer, did you want to respond first?
Can I say no?
Absolutely.
No. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Cortez is actually right on. I think communities as a whole adopt building codes, which includes the fire code. It's more comprehensive than just the fire code itself. The new codes come out every three years, and a lot of communities in their haste try to upgrade every three years. The Town of Florence has actually backed off from that than we're trying to do on a six-year cycle, which we're finding out is the best way to handle it, because problems that surface, and we're talking nationwide in some cases, then can be fixed in that next three-year cycle. So looking at every six years is probably the best way to go. You adopted the 2018 codes in my absence. I mean, I don't know when it was exactly. But what we're finding out is sometimes the amendments that are adopted locally are considered primarily for new-build construction and don't really necessarily, not intentionally, it just happens, don't really consider how it might impact existing building structures, businesses, when they change hands, when different types of inspections or permitting is required, state licensing, how those might be required, and where our code may be in conflict with some of those. This is something that's been brought to this town's attention, and this is a relatively easy fix in this particular case. But I think comprehensively, and Fire Marshal and I have talked this really briefly at this point, because I've only started back this morning. But we have discussed this very briefly, that, you know, ultimately, we need to take a comprehensive look at how we've impacted existing businesses and existing structures in town. And there may be some other changes come forward. We'll try to be more comprehensive and do them all at once, but there's no guarantee of that, as you're all well aware. So that's kind of my gut feeling at this point, and we'll be working together with the Fire Marshal to see where else we can make adjustments, let's put it that way, in our codes, to make them more user-friendly for existing as well as new building.
I think my issue is, because I totally get it, we'll come across things that we didn't realize we had conflicted when we made an amendment, or we didn't quite realize the impact that was going to have. Because that was actually what kind of brought forth this change in the code originally, was that the first code was too strict, so we had to pull it back a little bit. And in that, we had a conversation about schools and all that, and where did we want to, you know, toss that coin at? And we were all pretty content on that we wanted to be strict because of the fact that it's a bunch of children, you know, it's kids and things like that, or adults, but it just the whole thought of what you have when you're in an educational building. But what I need from staff is, when you listen to your council and through our conversation, and you think we're getting ready to make a decision that might not be in our best interest as we move forward, or might need a little adjustment, I need staff to stop being scared to stop us, to stop being scared to tell us, "Council, I need for you to take a breath, and I need for you to think about this for a minute." And these are the reasons why, one through 10, whatever it is. Because although there are times we're going to tell you we don't agree with you, it doesn't stop us from wanting to hear from you. And that's where my frustration is, is I feel that staff at times is advised or scared to tell council how they really feel. If you're invited to this room, and you're invited to stand or sit at this table or sit in the audience, you are invited to give us your opinion. And everybody is invited. So there's nobody here that can't give me their opinion. And even if you're an audience person and you have expertise in this, please interject it to us, because we all do not have the full expertise. We are relying on the people that are standing in front of us and giving us the information. That's where my frustration is at today. I don't know how this is going to impact one business versus 10 businesses today. I would like to know how it's going to impact everybody. Is it going to be a positive? Is it going to cause some problems for other businesses? Is there a middle that we need to meet? That's what I would like to understand, because right now, I'm going from one
Extreme.
One extreme to another, yes. And that's the pendulum that we all know, you pull it too far this way, it's going to come this way. And I would like for us to stay more in that little bit of a back and forth, where we can all be confident and stand behind the decisions that we're making.
If I might, actually, just a point of clarification. It's my understanding that we're not swinging too far with that pendulum. We're going from a very strict interpretation of the code to something that is conformance with the State Fire Marshal's office.
Correct. So, point of clarification. I'm hearing what you're saying, and I just, I have five bullet points that I want to run through. The first one is, based on what Councilmember Cortez said, what is the implications? Have we even looked at that as a staff? Do we know, first of all, like, what is being impacted? Why is this in front of us right now? Ms. Davis?
Sorry, I thought Lisa was going to speak. So as far as implications with the E occupancy, as Councilmember Cortez is asking, how does it implement other facilities? It's only going to affect the educational occupancies. So with that, an educational occupancy can be a daycare facility. It could be, I have the definition here, if you'd like me to read the official definition for you. The code in theory, minus the amendment, even with the amendment, should truly affect new construction, right? When you look at the International Fire Code and its application, its primary use is for new construction of whatever the occupancy is going to be. In certain circumstances, there is a requirement for an existing occupancy to meet the requirements of the current code. And sometimes, there's occupancies that might be a different occupancy that now wants to undergo a change of use. So with a daycare, you could be an I-4 occupancy, or you could be an E. So with that, we look at the code, right? What does the I-4 require? The I-4, very restrictive. It requires fire sprinklers, it requires fire alarm. Then you have the E. So you also allow these mom-and-pops that might have an I-4 to change to an E. Now, when you look at the 12,000 square-foot threshold, there's also a lot of other factors that go into hydrant location, water supply. So it's not just the 12,000 square feet. But again, this ultimately affects all new. So when we look at what's coming in new right now, as far as I'm aware, we don't have that many new structures. What I'm finding is existing, that that's where we're kind of having an issue. And with it being existing, I clearly hear and feel what council says about the code. I've gone through, and I've watched the videos, and I've watched you all here from Fire Marshals, and this is how we should go forward with the code. Looking in the history of the town, the town didn't adopt a fire code till 2006. International Fire Code, I believe, was the first one. And so the codes really kind of weren't enforced. And so with this, we have issues with existing buildings. And so, yes, the application is for new construction, but since we have issues with existing, sometimes the best way to help them is to use the current code. However, with strict amendments, we can't help them. So what I'm asking, again, we're not lessening the life safety. So the other requirement for this occupancy is every classroom has to have a direct means Vgress to the exterior. That's also a caveat of the E occupancy. So as far as impact, I think it's only going to benefit the community, because we'll be able to give another path forward to any existing structure that might either be this occupancy and wasn't compliant when it really originally took occupancy, or maybe it's somebody who wasn't compliant and needs to change. So it's in that. New construction, they're automatically going to go to the International Fire Code, and if it's a school, they're going to follow the state's requirements, not ours, because we don't have jurisdiction of the public schools.
So since the adoption of the new code, how many new buildings came forward to where the current zero square footage has been implemented and they have had to comply? Not since you've been here, because I know the answer.
Since I've been here. Anybody else?
Well, we know we have a new ALA that is an E school.
I'm talking daycares that have complied with us.
So I'll use, I'll use the famous words from the State Fire Marshal that would said that just because somebody went out and inspected something, if they didn't inspect it pursuant to the standards of the code, doesn't mean somebody gets a pass. It means that when they're inspected each year, they hope that a Fire Marshal will catch that to make it more safe. And so in the Town of Florence, I know we had already discussed this, there have not been anyone who's been affected by this. We brought it back to council so that we can make sure that we're not impacting daycares. We were also directed by council to bring back a comprehensive review of the current codes and the code modifications and to have a future work session. We have not done that yet, but we'll be happy to have that in the future. This one, we asked council to put it on this agenda, because we have a business that's waiting to have a signatory to go back to the state that they've requested for the town to sign, which I know you're all aware of.
What is the name of the daycare center and church on Franklin Road?
I do not know.
Desert Rock.
Okay. It was my understanding, and maybe I was given incorrect information by prior staff, that they had to put in a sprinkler system to facilitate their daycare. So I just wanted to make sure that we're being fair and equitable to all of our businesses and not doing what Councilmember Cortez said and saying, "Here, we're going to do this here, then we're going to switch to this here." Like, I'd like some consistency or some ability to make it right if we
When
harm somebody.
When we adopt a code, it's going forward, and it's a standardization across the board. So I know at times you'll have some, you'll have other Fire Marshals in the past that will say that, well, it really depends on the situation of how we're going to apply the code. But the great things about I codes is they're standard code that is international, and if they've adopted the I codes, then it should really be applied unilaterally. And not only in our community, if the county and other areas have adopted the same thing, that's supposed to tell people, "We've adopted this code, and when you work in Queen Creek, if they have the same code, when you work in Casa Grande, when you work in Coolidge, or when you work in Florence, the same standards will be set." So we won't be too lenient, nor will we be too strict, because there should be a standardization of codes. The other great thing is that we have re-implemented the Board of Appeals. So if our building official or our Fire Marshal are out and they're doing a job, and the community doesn't agree, the applicant does not agree, they can go through a process to have experts in the I codes be able to look at what they're doing and assess whether they have interpreted the code correctly. And so it's a great thing that we should be making sure that everyone is aware of, because if anyone is unhappy and does not think we're applying the codes the right way, we should ask for them all to utilize the Board of Appeals to be able to go through that process.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And then you did mention other communities. So all of the other communities around us, do you know they, they have a...
So the majority of the communities that surround us have a zero threshold for most all-new commercial occupancies. That includes Es, that includes Is. It's something that they've had adopted for multiple cycles. Um, it's something that they've had adopted for multiple cycles. Yeah, so, it kind of puts you back to the basic code and it does make you the kind of one-off, the town of Florence. It makes them the one-off because we are going back to the basic code. But when you look at your surrounding jurisdictions, they're newer, right? So, newer buildings. Again, when I mentioned the adoption of a fire code, the town of Florence had building codes, which, yes, there's two chapters that mirror the fire code. However, what I'm finding in the existing buildings is they were never applied. It was like they didn't exist. So, as we modify the code, even if you're looking to mirror your neighboring at a zero threshold, I hear how the town values their historic buildings and the inventory they have. Unfortunately, setting the lower thresholds to match your surrounding jurisdictions is not going to help our existing buildings thrive. Because at certain points, the new code has to be applied. And if we're so restrictive, we are going to start hindering businesses in your existing inventory of buildings. So.
What does Prescott do? Because they're pretty historic and they've been.
I did not look at Prescott to see what their requirements were.
Gosh, I ju, I look at it and I'm like, there has to be a way, there has to be a way where you have... And that's where I go back, I go back to that section 102. And I've been reading it and the section 102 is the international fire code for everybody. And I have been reading to where there's opportunity within what we have so we can maintain the safety structure. But at the same time, working with our businesses.
I think it's important that we start having conversations with communities that are similar to us. Marana is nothing like Florence. So, that's great that Marana or other communities like that want to have conversations with us or we want to go look at what they're doing. But Bisbee, Prescott, historic communities that have historic buildings is where we need to look when we're trying to apply code to our historic buildings. We have one of the greater number of Adobe buildings in the state. Why are we looking at communities that don't have Adobe buildings? Or don't have the amount of historic buildings we have? I will be the first one to argue with you that sprinklers in an Adobe building are not going to save that building. They might save the roof. And they might, Adobe's number one enemy is water. So, when you got a sprinkler pouring into a hundred and some-year-old building, the roof is going to burn. And yes, I know it might jump over to the next building, but the building itself, the structure, is not going to burn. It's not going to fall down. The roof is going to burn and it might jump. So, we can argue that one all day long. But we need to start understanding our community before we go and compare it to other communities. We need to be able to cite the communities that we're going to compare us to. Um, because I'd like to know what communities you're looking at. Um, when you say our neighboring communities are all at a zero threshold, I probably will debate that one as well because we watch what our neighbor communities are doing. We've seen their growth. And then I keep hearing this, um, the code applies to new construction. Great, we all get that. Nobody will argue new construction and making sure that the code applies to new construction. My concern and my issue always seems to come in, as Mr. Harmer will tell you, when we somehow go into an existing building that has an existing business and now all of a sudden we're saying, oh, by the way, you need to do all of this? Well, I've been here for 15 years. Why do I need to do all this? I've been here for 15 years in this building, conducting this business. Nothing has changed in that 15 years. Now, because somebody decided they wanted to start enforcing code, they're in my business telling me I need to install sprinklers, I need to install different kinds of windows, I need to do this. I need a new door because that door doesn't qualify, but it qualified for the business that was there six months ago doing the same thing I'm getting ready to do. So, as we're here today to talk about E, my frustration with code and the enforcement of this code is now coming out because I'm, I'm listening to contradictions in what is being said to me right here. Code is from the day it's set and forward. An all-new construction. That code does not go into an existing business retroactive who's been there for 12 years and goes in and says, hey, you need new windows, we don't like your windows. Well, those are the windows that were there every year I've been inspected for the last 12 years. So, either your previous inspectors weren't doing their job. Like, it's just, it's going to become a circle for you and I. And it's, it, it needs to get fixed. We need to figure out which side of this we're going to be on. But I will not idly sit by and allow our current business owners to continue to be impacted by what many of them are saying is the inability for us to set code and move forward. And make sure that we're applying the correct code to the correct businesses and the correct types, that we're consistent. If one business needs to pour a concrete slab for parking, then everybody needs to pour a concrete slab for parking. If one business needs to move a fire hydrant, everybody needs to move a fire hydrant. You know me, I'm a one-for-all or for none. I don't like picking and choosing. I like it to be very clear so that every person who looks at the town of Florence knows exactly what we expect before they come here. But right now, it is very difficult for me, even as a council member, to know what we expect because what I thought my level of expectation that I put out towards staff, every meeting, every email, every conversation, whether it be here or a side conversation, has always been very clear. But it, it seems to be fogged and, and very unclear to the public of what our level of expectations are. We have business owners that would, would have opened their business two, two years ago. But every time they turn around, they're running into a new code issue. We, we've, we've got to get better. So, I'm sorry I got off of E, but could you clarify for me the difference? You said E and I four? Was that what the two different ones were? What is the difference in them?
The fundamental difference in the building structure would be?
No, just like, what it, an E is educational, but that can be ALA? But, so then what qualifies under the other one? Like, what, what, if you know of one that you could just tell me the name of it? Or, like, do we have one that is that? Yeah, just say it.
Yeah, a daycare. So, you're asking her, I'm just clarifying what you're asking, what I think I'm hearing. They had said that a daycare can be either an E, and I don't remember what the I something she said before. So, an E is absolutely a school. That's an education. But a daycare can also fall into that E. And there's another area, which you can read to us, that it can fall into. I think what our fire marshal is trying to do is find the most positive way forward for the business with the areas that she can assess. And so, we had an inspection with a local daycare and the daycare had an E. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Wrong. Daycare is an I four.
Okay.
That I went into.
What makes it an I four?
It's an I four because it does not have doors from every classroom that lead to the exterior. It has, it's a house. That's what it is. And so, there are rooms that in order to exit the facility, you have to travel from that room through another room, through an exit. That makes it an I four. It creates a higher hazard for the children that are in there because their travel distance is exceeded. They have to go through another room if it's on fire. And potentially, Mayor Madam has even mentioned there was a fire in a preschool here in the town of Florence. And from my understanding of what happened in the situation, it was an I four as well. It was cumbersome for the children to get out of. They got confused, they got lost. They came out covered and so, it took the firefighters to put out the fire. That is a hazard of an I four. By becoming an E, those windows that have been in place for, since 1938, now have to become doors. When you ask about walking.
Can I just, real quick though, so then an I four, does it have a restriction on how many kids they can have? Um, like, the type of service, like, can they offer newborn infant services? Or do they, can they only offer like pre-K? Are there any restrictions? Not through us, because that's a state restriction. But do we know, are there? Because I guess I'm just trying to understand how you go from an I four to an E or how you could be in, like, a daycare is a daycare. But it, for me, daycare is a daycare. I don't care what kind of building you're in, you're a daycare, you're a daycare. If, if we need to have doors in every, in every room that the kids are in, this is where I get. This is where I'm like, for me, stricter is better when it comes to schools and daycares and things like that. Because we are dealing with babies, four-year-olds, even seven-year-olds that struggle with emergencies and, and being able to process how to get out and where to go. And so, I'm a li, I'm being a little more protective of them. So, I want to make sure that I understand why is there a difference between an I four and an E? And, and is the, the day, the daycare that triggered this? Or, we can hypothetically talk so that way we're not talking about a specific business. But if I have an I four, my restrictions are less? Because I?
No, if you have an I four, your restrictions are greater.
Okay, so if the I four is now moving to an E, now why are they now being required to change what wasn't a window in an I four to now a doorway? Because if the restriction is less, that's where I'm losing maybe that.
So, when you asked earlier about doing inspections on the code and going out and doing an inspection based on the 2018. So, I do not go out and do an inspection based on the current code. There are certain chapters of the current code that would apply to buildings previously approved. However, with these buildings and the history that they have, when I walk into a building, I take the approach of, okay, let's stop, pause, take a look, what is it? What was here? How's this function? This one in particular, I had to go back and do research. I walked away, I did not give her her inspection report, just walked away and said, I'll be back as soon as I do some research. Did my research. So, when you ask how did this happen? Change of use in the building took place in 2003. In 2003, the town of Florence had adopted the 2000 International Building Code. We had a building code official at the time. I don't believe she has a CFO, she's still looking for it. However, she was documented to be a B occupancy, which is a business, so nowhere near an I four or an E. However, in chapter nine of the International Building Code 2000, which the town of Florence adopted, sits the fire requirements. And in the fire requirements, in chapter three of the building code, sorry, I don't know the building code as much as the fire code, but I believe chapter three of the International Building Code is definitions. So, even though the town of Florence had only adopted a building code, they had inadvertently adopted a fire code through chapter nine. It was never applied. So, when you go back to the 2000 International Building Code, which was the code at the time that should have been applied to her structure, she has been non-compliant for 20 years. It was required in 2000 as an I four for the building to have fire sprinklers. So, when I ask you to revert to the code, I'm not saying we're providing a lesser level of protection for these kids. We're actually creating a greater level of protection than what they have now. We're giving them an exterior access to the classroom. You know, I don't, I don't, and I watched you, Mayor and council went back between the zero threshold and 5,000 square feet and the, and the 12. You know, I did watch everything that you went through with it. Um, and like Lisa had mentioned, you know, some of the wording maybe wasn't what it should have been from staff, but...
It's okay, it's okay. I'm stressful sometimes.
If I'm understanding correctly, maybe there's some variation between it being just strictly an educational center versus I four because of the fact that they're daycare and they have, say, preschool services? Is that how they toggle? Or what's, I guess, can you break that down? I guess we didn't get that question really answered.
Yeah, let me just read you the definitions because it truly comes down to doors. So, the educational group E in the definitions includes, among others, the use of a building or structure, a portion thereof, by six or more persons at one time for educational purposes through the 12th grade. Group E daycare facilities, the group includes buildings and structures, a portions thereof, occupied by more than five children older than two and a half years of age who received educational supervision or personal care services for less than 24 hours per day. Then there's the definition for five or fewer children. A facility having five or fewer, fewer children receiving such care shall be classified as part of the primary occupancy. So, that's like if we had a little daycare over here, it'd still be an assembly. Five or fewer children in a dwelling unit. A facility such as, uh, above with an dwelling unit and having five or fewer children receiving such care shall be classified as a group R3 occupancy or shall comply with the International Residential Code. And then for the I four occupancy, institutional group I four daycare facility. Institutional group I four shall include buildings and structures occupied by more than five persons of any age who receive custodial care for less than 24 hours by persons other than parents or guardians, relatives by blood, marriage, or adoption, and in a place other than the home of the person cared for. This group shall include, but not be limited to, adult daycare and child daycare. Classification as a group E. A child daycare facility that provides care for more than five, but not more than 100 children two and a half years or less of age, where the room in which the children are cared for are located on the level of exit discharge, serving such rooms and each of these childcare rooms has an exit door directly to the exterior, shall be classified as a group E.
I have a question, just because now I need clarification as well. If someone has someone there prior to, that is not two and a half years old, what happens then?
Right.
If they're under two and a half years of age, what are they classified for? Because I was told this one has an infant room.
Correct. So, what? You can still be an I four or an E. So, that's where the, I'm sorry, it is very confusing even for code people, the I four and the E. So, as I said, it really comes down to the doors. So, back to.
So, this might help too, because this is right from the state website where it says, group E occupancy. Any portion of a building or room or structure used for childcare services for more than five children older than two and a half years of age is a group E. Group I four occupancy. Any portion of a building or room or structure used for childcare services for more than five children younger than two and a half years of age. Rooms located on a level of exit discharge and where each room has an exit door directly to the exterior of the building may be classified as a group E for more than five, but not more than 100. So, that might help put it into.
That's exactly what I just read, Madam Mayor. It's just that last part that I read. They've added to their I four. So, it is back to where Lisa was asking, the under. So, it is the, under the I four, the classification of group E, a child daycare facility that provides care for more than five, but not more than 100 children two and a half years or less of age? Yes. Where the rooms in which the children are cared for are located on the level exit discharge, serving such rooms and each of these childcare rooms has an exit door. discharge, serving such rooms and each of these childcare rooms has an exit door directly to the exterior shall be classified as a group E. So again, you can have infants, it's the door, so at the exit level of discharge, which is the floor level, as long as I have a door, I'm allowed to be an E.
But what are you, correct, as, correct, allowed to be an E. I was looking at, what are you doing with the children that are over two and a half years of age, because I heard you reference earlier that currently or previously somebody, a business had an E.
They were an I four, they're moving to an E.
Okay.
That's why I'm, that's why I was asking for clarification of the difference in what makes you an I four versus an E, because if the I four is more restrictive, right? Even though it sounds like the E is more restrictive because it requires the door, unless I've got that confused.
So the I four is an automatic requirement for fire sprinklers and a fire alarm.
So I four has to have sprinklers and fire alarm, but does not have to have the exit door?
Correct.
Okay, and then an E does not have to have sprinklers? Yes or no?
In our code currently, we have a zero, which would require it to have sprinklers.
No, 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 we're, right now, we're being asked, if we were to do this, would an E then have to have sprinklers if it were, well, no, if it's under twelve thousand square foot, it will no longer have to have sprinklers, but it will have to have exit doors in every room that the children are in for instructional purposes.
So there is still a possibility that a brand-new E, under twelve thousand square feet, would require fire sprinklers?
Given some different variances and, yeah, yeah.
Given the type of construction, water supply, location to hydrants, there's lots of other factors where you could have a thirty-five-hundred square foot building still end up with sprinklers.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out, which, sorry Cliff, I probably went left on this, why would you move if you're currently an I four? Why would you move to an E? Why would you want to move to an E? Because if they stay in I four, they don't have to do the doors, or do they not have sprinklers? Okay, so for the past however many years. They, they've been, for the past, so what, what has happened and proves my frustration and why I, why I'm so frustrated with many, many things is that it's difficult to sit up here and make decisions like this when we know it's impacting a business. Because I'm trying to clean up someone else's mess that for the past twelve years didn't want to be the, the mean guy. I'm always painted as the mean guy, making it difficult for us to hire a town manager because I'm always up here telling everybody to do a better job. I challenge that town manager to come, they're going to do a fantastic job. But it, it's making it difficult for us because we look like we are being unworkable, uncompromisable. We're trying to do what's best for our businesses that we're here and our future, but because nobody did their job in the past, all of us are under the gun. So i- it's frustrating for me, I'm very frustrated today. And, and this conversation has taken a long time and I know, um, my council member Snake down there hates it when we spend a long time going back and forth and reiterating each other's statements, so I think for me, Mayor, I'm going to ask for all of us that we table this conversation because I feel like we all need a little bit more time to grasp.
Yeah.
The, I mean, the, the definitions, more time to read those, more time to understand, and this would be why I ask that we not rush code through council.
They're waiting for a license is why it came to us.
That's unfortunate.
This, this particular item, as long as council knows this particular item came to us and, um, we, we did go into executive session to explain to council the various standings and, um, what was, how this was going to be affected before we brought this to the floor, because we understand that council wants us to, um, apply the code the correct way. We also understand that council does not want to harm a business that is in place. So the one thing that we want to do is to make sure that we are providing avenues for businesses, so if there's somebody currently in place, if we have the ability to allow them to be successful with their business, but because the I codes say that it's supposed to be twelve thousand square feet, or international fire codes say it's supposed to be twelve thousand square feet, then that's you standing with the international fire codes. But in the situation to where we're giving a form that we have to sign off for a state that requires us to walk through the building to put checkmarks in, we can only go with what the council has adopted. And that is what we're trying to do for council, is make sure you set the rules, then we enforce the rules that you have set. And so if, if you would like us to go in and, um, leave it at zero, we're happy to do so, but we are also have to enforce it and we understand that you will be supporting us as we enforce it. Um, the interesting part, and I'm learning through all this, um, everyone knows I'm a clerk, I'm not a town manager, I'm doing my best, and the thing that I'm learning through this is that as you adopt the codes, the one thing about the fire plan that it allows for, for us to be able to create for a business can be, that's the individualization. So a fire plan that meets the needs to make sure that the people are safe is the area. So, um, the one thing I learned through this process is that if a person doesn't want to put, say that I have a twelve-bedroom house and I've decided that I am going to open a daycare, if I have a, if I have a house where I have to go through one room to get through to another room, I can particularly, working with the fire marshal, say I'm not going to have children in that room, I'm going to use that room as office or a, um, place for my staff to go rest, and I can reestablish the rooms and relocate where the kids are going to be to make sure they're in the proper space, and by working with the fire marshal, I can make sure that the children are in the safe rooms, that they would be allowed to, and I would move the non-rooms that have kids in it back to a different area. So I think that we're trying to learn from our past mistakes to make sure that we're being fair to the business while enforcing the direction of council. And if council would like to stay this item, we're happy to do so.
I, I think it's good that we are trying to move forward and be fair to new businesses and be fair to old businesses. Is the business that this, that is applied for this license and it's affecting, are they here tonight?
I don't know if they're online, I cannot see it.
I didn't see them online earlier.
I kind of feel like I, I have, uh, my planning and zoning department in front, in front of me asking me for a variance. When I'm sitting here looking at, I'm like, you're asking me to make a decision that's going to impact everybody because a business is, is applying for a license.
Hey, you bring up something that is just an idea.
Wait, and I know there are a.
A process.
For those of you that are watching us.
There's a process.
That have these in-home daycares, I hope that you are paying attention because this is affecting you as well.
But question, although now we're discussing a business that's been open and been running for over twenty years, where's the leeway in the code? All I'm hearing is the code is absolute, the code is absolute. They've been doing this for this long, and now it just goes to a, what we gotta do, we gotta do to them. There, there's no grandfather clause, no, no, any other clause that goes forth on this.
No, so unfortunately, the building was non-conforming when it took occupancy, so it's been incorrect since two thousand and three. In two thousand and three, before they ever took occupancy into that building, they should have installed a fire sprinkler system and a manual fire alarm system, so a pole station at every exit.
Why didn't our fire marshal tell them that?
We didn't have a fire marshal back then that I know of, I don't think the fire department was even, was it established? I don't know.
So then there has to be something in place.
So the code still tells us that if we do something incorrectly, we still have the right to make it correct.
But that's the thing, we didn't do anything incorrectly, we didn't do anything because we didn't have anyone in place to do anything. And that was twenty years later, and it's just a, oh, you're just SOL basically, that's, that's not fair to any business, old or new. I mean, if you go to towns around us or communities around us, I would like the numbers on how many of older businesses got shut down because a new code came in that day and they couldn't comply. That's, there, I'm, I, I just totally feel we're missing something here with that, because all these older businesses and older towns, you can't tell me that everybody is in compliance. Because we have a business that went twenty years that wasn't in compliance, and now all of a sudden it's, we're going to shut you down. That's, there, there can't be, there, there's no way possible I can believe that.
We can stay this item, ask the property owner as well as the renter to come in, we can look at other options that council would like us to look at. We can also look at the form that when, because this is not just for that one business, it's for all businesses, and I haven't seen the form yet, but we can ask for the form that the fire marshal is required to go in and sign off on for the state and to be able to look at that to see what it says.
So that's just my form. So the state requires a state licensed facility to have a municipal inspection, when they don't classify, they don't fall under the state fire marshal.
How often?
Annually.
Annually, so annually, to, to Mr. Neal's point, annually, for however long this particular business has been there, not only has the state failed them, but we have too because you are not our first fire marshal. I can think of four, three, I can think of one, one ex-fire marshal that's still employed by the town of Florence. And, and I'm going to now question all of our past fire marshals, I would like to see how many of them signed off on this building and whose signatures are on those sign-offs, that they inspected this building in the last, however, whenever our first fire marshal came in nineteen, whenever it was, seven years ago, fifteen years ago, whenever it was. This, we're impacting a business, as he has said, that's been there for however long, twenty years, whatever it's been.
Longer.
That we are now, we have a fire marshal who's going in and respectfully trying to do her job and me, and having to then listen to me, say, wait a minute, how are you going to go into an existing business and tell them that they're out? And, and I know this isn't the only business that this has happened to, that all of a sudden they, they're being told, wait, and it's not of their, it's not their fault, it's like, it's, they did not not install sprinklers because they wanted to not install sprinklers, they didn't have those things because nobody told them they needed them for the last twenty years, and now we're going to go and expect them to all of a sudden come up to twenty eighteen codes. I get safety and I want them to be safe and I want them to have the doors and I want them to have everything that's needed because I want my little kids that are in there safe and I don't want to see a report that, God forbid, something happened. I don't want to see that, but at the same time, I need to be compassionate towards this business that for twenty years has operated to their knowledge as required, and, and, and the state should have been in there just like we should have been in there, inspecting this building and ensuring that they were meeting all of the qualifications, it can't all just fall on this business owner. We all, I, I keep telling everybody lately, we all need to take accountability for our role in the situations that we seem to find ourselves in.
But yet, as the council, that we said, that I've been here three years, and I know that business has been open for twenty-something years, if you ask me, Florence and us, the town council has failed them, and we need to do everything we can to help them, not even a personal stake in it, I'm just saying that's just totally crappy for us to sit here and be, there's an absolute at this point, when it's been twenty years down the road, there isn't, there shouldn't be.
This is my first time ever hearing about this issue, and you are my fourth fire marshal, and I've been here for five years. So, and this is the first time this has ever come before council in the five years I have sat here. And I'm very, very, I apologize, I'm a little irritated, a little irritated about this. So I don't know what we're going to do, I don't know, but I'll, I'll leave it for my council to kind of guide in the direction they want to go.
Okay, so I'm, I'm for approving this, just for the mere fact that, and I understand that, that, the, the person that was in business for twenty years, just because somebody wasn't doing their job or whatever, doesn't mean we do the same thing, you know, uh, I, I appreciate you doing your job, that's, that's, that's commendable, um, but I say we work with them, not say, hey, you need to get this done by the end of the week, so we, we do need to be reasonable and, and if we do implement this, and saying in a reasonable amount of time, you know, adjust, not to say, you know, we need to get this done by the end of the week, because that's, that's, um, not a, how do you call it, a?
Not friendly.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not feasible, so, that, that's all.
Councilmember Butchalado.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that this is not just one person's livelihood, this is the staff, and this is everybody that takes their child to that location's livelihood as well, because now those people, this is one of the biggest daycares in town, and now all of those parents are going to have to find somewhere else, and, you know, I have children, most of us have children, and I would never say cut a corner, you know, and cost a kid their life, that's not what I'm saying at all, but there has to be some sort of, um, way that we can work with this business to get this together, going, meet in the middle. I know firsthand, I mean, I've sat here quiet for a long time just taking everything in, but I know firsthand, um, that sometimes it's not fair in our town. And I know you're coming in and you're trying to do your job, and none of us are faulting you for that at all, because this is what we wanted all along. But I think we need to keep an open mind and to have discussions and hard discussions because a lot of people have been failed over the years. I've lived here my whole life, I've seen it firsthand, it literally just happened to us this year. When I say us, I mean my family, saw it firsthand. And you have other businesses that don't apply for permits, don't try to get certified by the state, cut corners, and you know what? They're left alone. And then you have people trying to go about it the right way, and they're not worked with at all. It's this or that, and it's, oh, now that you want to do this, well, we found this and we found that, and it needs to be fair. And we need to be equal across the board, and we need to sit down and work with people. These, these people have been, I know it's been a month since our executive session at least, if not longer, and they are on hold for their business, like, time is of the essence. And I'm not saying we need to rush it because we really need to figure this out, because this is for the safety of the employees as well as the children, but there has to be some sort of, of conclusion to this that, that can help everybody.
I asked her if the business has been impacted so that we could clarify.
No, you're fine. So there has to be some sort of, um, way that we can work together with this business. We've seen it done with other businesses, and this is, you know, a lot of people's livelihood on, over here too, and I think we can come up with something to try to rectify this. And I understand the code is the code right now, but we've also failed this business and the employees for twenty-something years now, and it's really sad that this is where we're at, and it's everything that we're trying to stay away from. And I've been on this council for a year and we've been really made out to be the bad person because we are trying to be fair, and we are trying to do things the right way, and we are trying to clean house, and now we're branded as difficult, um, difficult to work with, um, because we're trying to unravel things and to try to correct things and prevent them from happening again. Um, in my next three years that I'm here, I don't want people to look back ten years from now and say, oh, they really messed up from two thousand and three to two thousand and seven. I would really like to know that I left my position in a better spot than when I got into it, and that's all I'm saying, I don't know what we're going to, oh, I don't know what it's going to be, but there is a business on the line here, and if we can jump into action for one business like we did a month or two ago, then I don't see why we can't jump into action for another. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
Can you explain to us, just because we need to have the education, um, an existing building, there is an existing building code, can you explain how this is?
Can you explain how this is affected by the existing building code? And then will you explain one more time for us? So usually, under the building official side, they only come in when there's a permit and they only come in when there's a new business. But on the fire marshal side for a business, the fire marshal walks through that business every year. Can you explain what the fire marshal is doing when they walk through that business every year? And what part of the code book that they look? We've been here, like, um, councilmember Buchalata said, councilmember Corda said, mayor has said, we've been here for a number of years. And there's been a number of years that we know that our, um, fire department has been so busy that maybe they haven't gone through those businesses. So now that we're actually going through those businesses, it would be a good idea. And if this is a work session later, we can do that. But I just want us to understand what it is when we go into an existing business, what it is we're looking for and, and what code you're comparing them to when you walk through those buildings.
So the first question is the international existing building code. So it is one that the town of Florence adopted, twenty eighteen. As far as the application of the international existing building code, it is a tool for architects, um, to help business owners when they take occupancy of a new building, to be able to use what we'll call a less restrictive code, right? So the IEBC has different levels of alteration. It says if you're a level one, which is kinda like paint and some other stuff, minor interior stuff, you don't have to bring your building up to any current international fire codes or building code. But again, the IEBC, international existing building code, is not something that we reference to do our inspections. It is a tool for somebody taking occupancy of an existing building to help them not to have to meet current codes through the use of their architects to work around, so no sprinklers, no alarm, they can work within those confines. When a fire inspector or fire marshal goes out to do a fire inspection on an annual basis, first of all, I wanna make something clear, that there's nothing in the fire code that requires the fire marshal or fire inspector or fire department to do an annual inspection. Just so we're clear, it is not like in there, you must go every single year. State licensed facilities, they are required by the state to have an annual inspection by their local jurisdiction. And then your fire inspector obviously would do any new construction or tenant improvement that's coming into the facility or into the jurisdiction. So if you're going into an existing building, you start to look at just the basics. The walls or the walls together, wall penetrations, emergency and exit lighting, the doors, door hardware, other firing signatures. So every building that you're gonna go into is a different occupancy. So sometimes you're gonna look at things a little bit different. This is an assembly occupancy. So with this, you know, are your curtains fire rated? I mean, there's just certain things when we go, it's kind of a mental list that you would go through, through years of practice of, you know, this occupancy has this, 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 and this. Are the bases covered? And then you start looking at little things like extension cords. But obviously, major life safety, you know, are the doors in the correct position? Do they swing the way that they need to swing? Do they have the correct hardware? Has everything been tested? The building's fire alarm, has it been tested? Building sprinkler system, has it been tested? Has it been maintained? Is everything operable, is it communicating? And that is easy said to done on a building that was built compliant when it took occupancy. And when you ask, how does this happen? I can't speak about people who were in my position in the past. I will speak about my experience as a fire inspector. That it is wrong for us to think this way, but it is a thought process of every fire inspector and fire marshal, that when you go in to do an inspection in a building, you assume that when the building was constructed and took occupancy, that it was compliant at the time that it was allowed to be occupied. So if you're not closely looking for doors swinging in the wrong direction or any of those things because you're going, oh, well, it was previously approved. But again, our code tells us if it was wrong, then there's, I mean, we're all human and we all make mistakes. So it's all checks and balance. Even on a brand new building, when we get plans and we do a review, we still have field inspections to certify that everything that's on the plan is exactly what happened in the building. Does that help answer, did I answer the question?
I have one more, so one more. So because this was an existing building and an existing business, did we use the existing building code or which code?
No, so I did, my inspection was visual, came back to the office, again, research. So their deficiencies were based on the two thousand international building code, not the international existing building code. The international existing building, I have architects that might know a little bit better. Do you know if in two thousand did the IEBC exist?
I don't know about existed.
I don't either. So I don't even know that the IEBC existed in two thousand. The IEBC currently is a tool for architects to help them get people into buildings and structures that are going to struggle coming up to current code. It's not something to inspect off of. So the inspection was based off of the two thousand international building code. And that's where her code violations were, the two thousand international building code.
So you can see, cause you went down this rabbit hole.
Yeah.
Probably should've waited, Lisa, because now you're down the hole I love to go down. So you can see why if I am an existing business or I'm taking over a space that is an existing business, I move, I'm a restaurant and I'm moving into a restaurant's business, space, that was a restaurant within the last sixty days, why it would be very confusing, frustrating, and to the point infuriating, that I might decide I don't even wanna be a part of here. Why it's confusing, because if the business that was just there met all of the requirements to get a certificate of occupancy, which means they have to meet fire code, they have to meet building code and all the other licensing things that they need to meet, they get a certificate of occupancy and then here I come and I can't get that certificate of occupancy. And one of those examples is the door that I brought up. Oh, can't have that kinda door, but they had it and they got a certificate of occupancy. I didn't touch the door, all I did was paint it. And now I can't have my certificate. That's one of the many things on my list of reasons why I can't have a certificate of occupancy. Then you have a business that we all understand. If I'm a certificate of occupancy under business, small office, and I'm going to move to mercantile, you've now opened yourself up. Welcome to fire code and building code. Everything's gotta be brought up because it's a new occupancy under a new designation. But if it's the same designation as the business that was just in there, and Larry, you'll have to help me on this one because you were here for this, how long a building could be empty before we required it to meet the new? If it had a certificate of occupancy during a certain period of time, I think it was six months, we allowed them that certificate of occupancy to stay valid, even if it's a new business, as long as they were applying for the same certificate of occupancy.
Council amended that to allow for a maintained building that has electrical and it has maintenance to go for three years.
Well, but that, I'm sorry, Chris? I'm trying to have a conversation with her. And I don't mean to be rude, but I, I'm trying to have a conversation with her. So if it had a certificate of occupancy and it was staying that same, same occupancy designation within six months, you should be able to safely assume that everything that that previous building had met the requirements for theirs. So you should not have issues unless you make major changes. Electrical, plumbing, we all know that the minute you knock down a wall, we all, we all understand that that opens up the whole thing. None of us are, we're saying you make no changes, no significant changes to electrical and things like that. And then you have the business when they, they switch. So in this conversation, you're telling us that, one, there is no code in your book, and I appreciate that you brought that book because that, that hardly ever comes to council, that there is nothing that says that there has to be an annual inspection. That's a new statement because we were not, we've always been told that there is a requirement for an annual inspection. They just hadn't been happening. Um, and so, uh, fire marshals were then not notifying businesses that they were gonna come in and start doing these inspections. And our businesses panicked a little bit, rightfully so. So you, you've told us that, that's a contradiction to something we've heard before. And if I'm not, if I'm not understanding you correctly, when you go into an existing business, you're not using the existing building code to inspect that building. So it's all just how you feel that day or? Because, because that's where I'm like going, well, then how do you justify going into a business that has been inspected, had a certificate of occupancy? They obtained that certificate of occupancy. And now today, you're gonna go in and tell them you don't meet the code? And so now you have to make changes to your existing building, your existing business because you don't meet code, but they've had a certificate of occupancy. I don't care if the certificate of occupancy has only been valid for six months or it's been valid for sixty years. We all know that as time goes on, businesses, the building no longer meets the current code, but it met the code when it was built. And so this is where I'm like going, but if it met the code when it was built and it met the code when they got their certificate of occupancy, they're not changing anything. How do we go in and now tell them, you've gotta change these things? Because they haven't done anything different than what they've always done.
This is my fault because I confused the issue by asking about the existing code. So the existing code is for the building official side. So when the fire marshal said that she went back and she used the adopted fire codes because she's a fire marshal, she's only using the fire codes. But she doesn't use the codes of the building official. So that's my fault for bringing up that issue, I apologize.
But she goes in and I, I, the position, we'll remove it from you personally and we'll just say the fire marshal goes in to a building that's already there, already has a certificate of occupancy and now is requiring changes of them that are different than what they were required, but they qualified the day before for that certificate of occupancy. They're under threat of losing their certificate of occupancy. They're now being asked to spend thousands of dollars. This is where my, this is why I'm frustrated. This is why I'm frustrated because how do we do that? How do we go in and say, oh, by the way, you don't meet what I think the code is today and so we're going to make you meet that code, but they met it the day before. Whether it was fire marshal one or fire marshal ten, they met it between one and nine because now fire marshal ten is telling them they don't met, they don't meet it. But one through nine told them they did. And we, when we handed them that certificate of occupancy, told them they did. So now I'm saying that we as a staff need to do better because before you enter that certificate of occupancy, it is our job to make sure that building meets those requirements at all times. Because then we don't have this situation where we walk in six months later and tell them, oh, by the way, you can't have that. And they're saying, but it's always been here. I get if they do something new. If you inspect them today and then you inspect them in a year and they've changed things that now make them violate the code, the fire code, we all understand that, hey, you weren't supposed to do that. You now have to bring it up, like they've added some crazy equipment and done some electrical and done some side work at night at six P M, the workers sneaking in or on a Saturday or whatever, however it gets done. Or they expanded their bathrooms and now their bathroom or whatever, took themselves out of compliance. We all get that that's when they have to now meet those codes. But if they met it and haven't made any changes, then we're going in and asking them to meet it, to now step it up to that new code. It's frustrating and I'm talking in a circle, but this is how you guys have made me feel, like I gotta talk in a circle.
Yeah, and you know, I think that the entire staff agrees. And the difficult part is if you go into a building that got their certificate of occupancy and let's say it's two thousand, when we were using the two thousand codes, and if you go in and you're going through the two thousand codes and they don't meet the two thousand codes, but somebody else signed off on it. So the question is, and it comes to every council and every staff, is, are we supposed to go in and make sure that they are and meet the conditions of the code at the time when they got their certificate of occupancy? Or because somebody else made a mistake, is it that we're supposed to look away? And if we look away and someone gets hindered and hurt because it's a two thousand code that we're trying to apply to a two thousand building, where does that leave us? And you're absolutely right, everyone up there that said it leaves all of us being the bad guy in the room. You're absolutely right. Because when you go in and you try to do the right thing, it comes out and it, it makes us look sometimes like villains. And that's where we have to decide. It's a, it's, it's an issue of if they were in two thousand or if they were in two thousand and six or if they were at the two thousand and twelve codes, what do we do when we find those mistakes that were made along the way?
I have a response to you and then I'm gonna turn it over to councilmember Larson. So when we're looking at fire code for somebody who is in this, um, profession as well, there was an exception that was shared and it stated, where approved by the fire code official, a change of occupancy shall be permitted without complying with the requirements of this code and the international existing building code, provided that the new or proposed use or occupancy is less hazardous based on life and fire risk than the existing use or occupancy. So that goes along with what you're saying, so it's really...
Quote, quote that chapter, cause I'm not proficient in the I codes and I'd like to go back and grab that.
Okay, it's not a chapter, it's from a fire marshal.
Are we gonna cite who that?
And we, we absolutely can.
But I would like the section of the fire code that says that.
And it's in section, um, one oh two applicability. It states, A one oh two dash one, construction and design provisions. The construction and design provisions of the code shall apply to structures, facilities, and conditions arising after the adoption of this code. Two, existing structures, facilities, and conditions not legally in existence at the time of the adoption of this code. Three, existing structures, facilities, and conditions were required in chapter eleven. Four, existing structures, facilities, and conditions that in the opinion of the fire code official constitute a distinct hazard or to life or property. Subsection A one oh two dot two, administrative, operational, and maintenance provisions. The administrative, operational, and maintenance provisions of this code shall apply to, one, conditions and operations arising after the adoption of this code. Two, existing conditions and operations. Again, subsection A one oh two dot three, change of use or occupancy. A change of occupancy shall not be made unless the use or occupancy is made to comply with the requirements of this code and the international existing building code. And then the, um, professional interpretation stated that, where approved by fire code official, a change of occupancy shall be permitted without complying with the requirements of this code and the international existing building code, provided that the new or proposed use is less hazardous based on life and fire risk other than the existing use or occupancy. Chief, what's your experience?
He's like, dang it.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I've grown up in a small fire department that became a very large fire department. And what you are experiencing tonight is called growing pains. You've touched on so many different topics and we've strayed quite a bit from the topic at hand here. But you are going to, this council and many councils in the future that succeed you are going to be faced with this very difficult decision because some humans are not trained as well as others and they're gonna find things in our community that were not found before. And as was mentioned earlier, some businesses just start up without permits, without inspections. And at some point in the future, we will want to inspect those and make sure they are safe for the community that enters those. And you are gonna grapple with very similar circumstances. What's being put in front of you tonight is a simple question about... being put in front of you tonight is a simple question about, should we move back to a 12,000-square-foot building code that allows this one occupancy to not have to sprinkler it? It doesn't fully solve all of their problems, because it changes the occupancy, which would require windows to be doors. That's not an easy fix either. But these are difficult decisions that you're facing. It is my opinion that agreeing with staff tonight makes sense. Is it possible it will cause problems for another occupancy down the road that we cannot predict or foresee tonight? That's very possible. But based on the information that we have at hand tonight, this is a good decision to make. My recommendation is that you follow recommendation of staff.
And then, Councilmember Larson, and then I'll...
So, it was said a couple of different times tonight, when you're talking about this particular instance, that it was falling back to the 2000 and 2008, three codes, correct?
2000 international building code?
Right.
Change of use for the building was in 2003.
Correct, yes. My question comes in the fact that we are changing the 2018 international fire codes. So, in doing that, are we then implying through this action, that now we're, since we're saying, okay, in 2018, this is the one we're changing, that's not what they were, the standard that was set before? Before, it was the 2000 codes. So, in turn, wouldn't we have to change the 2000 codes to apply to this particular instance? Or, if we move this to the 2018 codes, are we implying that now they have to meet all of the other standards of the 2018 codes?
Last part confused me a little bit, but we'll go back to that.
Okay.
So, with...
You got what I'm saying, Michelle? You got it?
With the codes, so, the point of the E, using the current code. So, if the current code was in its basic state, as written by the international fire code, an option for me to go to her, to be less restrictive, would be to propose, hey, let's undergo a change of use. This entails this, 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 and this. With having the amendment the way it sits, it's the same. It doesn't matter. You're an I-4, you're an E, you're sprinklering, you're putting an alarm, right? So, there, there's no benefit to help her. By using the current code, she's now undergoing a change of use. So, with the change of use, I also have the code in commentary, if you, it's been a very long night anyways, but it does explain what Mayor was asking about, when she said that the, we have the right to kind of use the IABC and not apply the current code for a change of use. It's talking about being less, so like an A2 to an S. And again, it's having the architects do it. With this one, if she changes her use, I can't use the international existing building code, because it's a change of use, automatically says you have to meet the current code requirements. So, current code as it sits would give her an out, which is convert windows into doors. Therefore, you don't need a sprinkler or a fire alarm. Current amendments, she's sprinklering and alarming the facility either way.
Okay. So, I think that sort of answers my question, except for maybe the second part. So, by her doing the change of use, she's automatically having to be in the 2018. Is that, is that what I'm understanding, correct?
Correct.
So, it really wipes out that 2000 prior standard that was set. So, does that...
So, either one has to be met.
Right. But because she wasn't meeting the 2000, because, and it had the wrong use, now she's automatically going to have to be to the 2018. Is that my understanding? Is that?
No, so she could still meet the 2000 fire code, or building code, sorry, Chapter 9. She can still meet that, and the requirement still sits as it sits today. She has the option to remain an I-4 occupancy, install an NFPA 13 fire sprinkler system, and install a manual fire alarm system. That is, that is what was required then, and that is still in today's current code, a requirement for a new I-4.
Okay. So, then that does bring me to my secondary question, is that, in a hypothetical sense, what I'm hearing you say is that we could be changing the 2000 codes, which would, no, we couldn't go back and add an amendment to that one that would suddenly make this less restrictive for that one. My, my question becomes then, if, if she's now being forced to be in the 2018 codes, is this going to open the Pandora's Box to having her have to be compliant other ways, because this will be her new standard in all ways, and for fire safety, as well as building safety? Because now she, we're wiping anything that was done in the past with the 2000. That's, that's done. Whatever is now in 2018, this will be the new standard for that building. So, my concern is, since we're changing it for this one little exception, we're going to change your occupancy and put you here, then now are we opening this Pandora's Box for that building to where there's other things that they might have to change to be in compliance with the 2018 code?
So, with the change of use, structurally, her biggest challenge is the windows to doors.
Okay.
That is, and it is not going to be an easy task. So, what is being asked of Mayor and council is to help alleviate and give her a possibility, because right now she has no options. It is sprinkler and alarm, and that is it, whether it's an I-4 or an E. If you change her occupancy, it's, if you change the code, it's still up to her, right?
Right.
It's still up to her, whatever option she takes. It's just council is giving a tool to help another avenue be created. Is she, and the documentation, you know, as far as staff is concerned, trying to make sure that everything is properly documented in this case, in every case, in the future going forward. So, if she undertakes a change of use, because that's how she chooses to do, she will have to file an application, go through the whole process, so that it is documented. All along the way, she will get a new certificate of occupancy. But then again, she's now being compliant, so hopefully, I mean, keep hearing, you get one, one bite of the apple, right? So, I mean, this is our chance. If we allow her, we change the codes to change her occupancy, we have one chance to get it right. So, the biggest cost burden, though, is going to be changing windows to doors in an adobe building.
I just didn't want us to pigeonhole, looking at this one issue, and then have it come back in a year, and have them say, well, because we changed this last year because of this one issue, we've now created other issues here. So, and since she's in the 2000 currently versus the 2018, I just didn't want there to be any confusion if there was an ability to adopt something that would retroactively work on that 2001, that would somehow bring the end of compliance, and not mess with any buildings going forward, or other businesses, and just address this one issue, so that we're not creating other issues.
I hear what you're saying, and, and I agree, and I wish that that could be, where you can go back and retro a prior code. You also reminded me, when Michelle, Ms. Councilmember Cortez, was speaking, one of the things that popped in my head, when we're looking at making a decision based off of one sole business, or one, however, one anything, I look and say, that's the process for a variance. That's the process for, hey, I've been here for, you know, 20 years. This is my history. This is my grandfather-ness that Councilmember Neil had brought up, and going before that board, because essentially, you're changing code and best practice that's used in other municipalities as well, because of one. So, I just, I, I do know that we have our boards sat for variance, and that is an avenue. But before I go further, I know Vice Mayor wanted to say something really quick.
Okay, this is my understanding of what's going on tonight. We have a current code that if she stays in the current code, she has to put in sprinklers and fire alarm system. If we change the code, then all she has to do is change windows to doors. So, in essence, we're trying to help her by changing this. She is the renter. Do we know if the owner of the building will allow for these doors to be put in, and are we going to change the code, and then this not be able to happen? That's the biggest thing that I, my concern is, is that, yes, we can go ahead and change the code to try to help this business, but if the owner of the building doesn't allow it, doors to be put in where windows are, then we have, we're back to square one.
So, this particular item is about the E item, but just because you asked the question, I will go back and answer it as well. So, you're right. Staff did come to council and request for this item to potentially move forward to allow for a lesser for the businesses. When you go back to the I codes, it has the 12,000 square feet versus the zero square feet. But because childrens are involved, when we were adopting the code, council chose to be more restrictive. And we all watched the tape. I even talked to our former Community Development Director, who is on line tonight, if you'd like to open it up and allow him to speak as well. During that conversation, in that meeting, he also stated that adopting the I codes at the time is just fine, the way it is, because that is what the standard is. But if there's anything council wants to be more restrictive on, you can do so with the amendments. And then, we publish the amendments. So, allowing for opportunity to be able to have a fire plan, per se, versus it's this, or we can't move forward. But you're, you're right. We don't know what's going to happen with the future of this business, and this isn't about one business. This is about us not taking into consideration, and we talked about it, we said, this is about us not taking into consideration the various buildings that it could apply for. Because what we thought about during that time was, who's going to build a school that's going to be under 12,000 square feet? Because if you build a school, usually you're building a campus, and that campus is going to be over 12,000 square feet. I know there's a lot of, help me, Mayor, what are they called?
Now, they have microschools.
Microschools, thank you. Microschools. So, if the council wants to make sure that every building that is an E has fire sprinklers, and it has these things in place, then we leave it like it is, and, and we go forward with how we're supposed to do it. But if council wants to have that option, we can have that option. But again, as Councilmember Cortez said, if you want to stay this and have this for a work session, we're happy to come back with a work session. We're happy to invite both the property owner and the business owner. But this isn't just for one business. This is for multiple businesses. And so, just making sure that, we want to be able to have the ability to work with people, and we want to have the ability to apply the code equally across the board. The last thing we want to do is apply it to one business, and then not apply it to the next. Or, go in and say, you can't change your occupancy. You have to stay at this level, and therefore, you have to have the most restrictive. We're not trying to be that person that doesn't come up with options to allow your business to stay in place. We're trying to work with you so that you meet the codes. And we do understand that that's what council's asking for. Council's asking us for us to apply the codes evenly. They're asking for us to apply it correctly, and they're asking for there to be an appeal process. So, we've put those things in place, for that people have somewhere to go. And we can definitely stay this. I did want to have a conversation about the variance, though, because variances are used for sign height and things like that, that only, only affects that one business, and it's not so much that it would come before. But I codes have never been a variance. So, I would have to go back and check with the attorneys to see if I codes can have it a variance. Because if you take life safety issues and say, but we're going to do a variance, and we're not going to have you comply with life safety issues, we might get in trouble. Go ahead.
Yeah. Mayor and council, I'm, I'm not an expert on the building codes, but I'm pretty sure there's no variance process in there. The process is for an applicant to appeal to the board that specializes in this area. Those board members, I think, are in place now. We, we, the town has that type of board, so that's a possibility. I'm very sure, though, that even if there's some type of waiver ability, in the discretion of the code officials, if it's a safety issue, there can't be a waiver of that safety issue. So...
I'm not asking that for be a, relegal, because he hasn't had time to research it. That's just off the cuff.
Yeah.
But I will say that a variance such as sign height, a variance such...
That's a zoning, that's a zoning matter, and so, a variance doesn't, a variance, a zoning variance does not apply in this situation at all. What you're asking is whether there would be some kind of waiver process. I can't tell you off the top of my head if there's a waiver process, but I'm pretty sure the way the codes are written, that if it's considered a health safety issue, there is no waiver process, which is similar, there was a mentioning of a grandfathering, and, you know, typically with building codes, there's no grandfathering, because the state, the city, the town, they're not considered to have waived their right to enforce health safety codes. It's a little bit different than the zoning realm, where you do have grandfather rights, and in zoning, you can get a variance. This is a little, this is a different realm.
So, Section 1.9.2, limitations of authority, the last sentence within that section says, "The board shall not, shall not have the authority to waive requirements of this code." The first paragraph says, "An applicant for an appeal," so this is for an appeal, not for a variance, "shall be based on the claim that the intent of this code or rules legally adopted herein have been incorrectly interpreted. The provision of this code shall not be fully applied, or an equivalent method of protection or safety is proposed. The board shall not have the authority to waive the requirements of the code, but the board does have the right to say if the staff for the town of Florence has interpreted the code incorrectly, or is trying to apply it incorrectly." But they're not allowed to go in and say, but we're going to waive you having to do this code. Does that make sense?
I'm going to review the entire document, not just...
Well, that's just the section of the appeal.
Yeah, no, because I was reading some other parts, and depending on which sentences you read out loud.
Yeah, that was the whole section. I sent, I read the whole, I read the one sentence, and I went back and read the entire paragraph for that section.
Mayor, Mr. Harmer had his, would like to speak.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The clerk is referring to the Board of Appeals, not the Board of Judgment.
Yes.
The Board of Appeals is where you appeal interpretations and enforcement of the building codes, and, and which would include the fire code in this particular case also. But also, just kind of as a reminder, this issue came forth because the town was asked to go through and inspect the building in response to something that came from the state of Arizona as a checklist, as to whether or not they meet certain requirements, in order so that they can continue their license to, you know. The larger issue that you're all discussing now is very relevant to the overall development of the community itself, but this was triggered because of this one particular situation. It's not the only situation, you know, type of business where this could come to play. It's the one that surfaced at this point in time. And the, the requested change to take these zero square foot and revert it back to the state fire marshal's standard of 12,000 square foot benefits this business in this particular case. Will it benefit other businesses? Very likely. And there are, there's a larger issue, absolutely, and to have a work session on that larger issue makes a lot of sense. But it doesn't, you know, it holds up our, our ability to respond to the state of Arizona, so that this business can stay in business, and, you know, keep providing the service to the various residents, and, you know, within the community itself. Will it solve all of the deficiencies that were identified, based on the state's requirements? No, probably not. But as was mentioned by the fire marshal, it's going to lessen the overall impact of what modifications might be required, and therefore, logically, you know, lessens the financial impact to them to actually accomplish these changes. The, the question by Councilmember Mendoza, whether or not the property owner, you know, since this is a Lee C. in this particular case, is conducive to making these changes, or allowing those changes to happen. I, I'm not aware, one way or the other, at this point, and I'm not sure that the fire marshal is either. We've been dealing with the applicant, applicant who's been trying to continue their license with the state of Arizona. We've been dealing with the applicant, applicant who's been trying to continue their license with the state of Arizona.
Currently, are they, so... Currently, are they, are they still operating? And if we, I guess either way our decision goes, either we say we're sticking to what we currently have, or we're adjusting it, and then you've gotta make changes to the building to now meet the adjustment, the change, so all the windows now have to become doors. Are they going to be allowed to continue to operate during that portion as well?
I, I think that would be, gonna have to be a determination by the state, how they would react if we put this on hold at, at the town's level, I don't know.
So, that decision...
That would be a question of the state.
Okay, so that decision is going to be made by the state. If currently there's, there, like if there's kids there tomorrow, if we change it during their construction, are they going to allow kids if they do one room at a time? That'll be a state decision?
Yes, I believe so. Now, the fact that they would be operating in, in good faith, I would hope that the state would take that into consideration, but I can't answer for that state agency.
So, then I'm going to ask, um, because, uh, in the past, we have issued temporary certificate of occupancies, which I am completely against, um, because I think people have been utilizing temporary certificate of occupancies outside of the, uh, purpose of a temporary certificate of occupancy. It's meant to be for training your staff, getting the, you know, getting whatever, getting it set up and allowing you to have people inside there not to actually be open for business. So, in that, when do we say you don't meet the requirements of the code yet? So, we can't have you operating your business until you meet those requirements? Because if we change it, and we allow them to change the windows to doors, they don't meet that requirement yet. Regardless of what the state wants them to do, they don't meet our now requirement to have a certificate of occupancy, which we don't even know if they have at the moment. So, are we going to give them a temporary certificate of occupancy to continue doing business? Or are we going to say, I'm sorry, yes, we've changed, we've made the change to help lessen your load, but unfortunately, until those changes are completed, we can't give you a certificate of occupancy?
So, right now, we're not talking through, we're working with the assumption that they had a certificate of occupancy 20 years ago. With that being said, the immediate action is there are three rooms that they can no longer have business in right now. They can relocate, they can shift, it's a way, another mechanism to keep them open, right? So, right now, the rooms are not being utilized by children, so it, I make it sound relatively simple. However, kids, toys have to go in the right room for their age, that's on the state. But as far as the fire marshal, town position is, we're letting them operate. They did have a certain number of days to shift and make sure that they no longer use the rooms that if they underwent a change of use would need to be modified. Um, and as far as the timeline, it's a group effort at this point. If this is something that's, you know, mayor and council is, is willing to go back on, we've been in contact, um, as staff with the state to try and maintain their licensing, knowing that there was, um, issues.
So, if they have, let's, because I've never been in that building or any of the buildings, so hypothetically, let's say there's five rooms, of those five, three don't qualify, or two, whatever. Where the other ones do qualify because they have the exterior, they have the door going into the, out to the exterior from that room, they don't have to maneuver the building. Those rooms would still be able to be utilized, and the business would still be able to operate day to day, and the other rooms would be at the same time being constructed to, to now meet, if we were to change the code and allow them to change windows into doors and whatever else needs to be done.
No, the rooms being shut down are the rooms that they would have to change. So, they would not be having construction while those rooms were occupied.
No, so like if you have five rooms, and of those five, three of them don't have X, the doors that are required. They have two rooms that meet that door requirement, so those two rooms, they will still be able to continue to use if we go ahead and make the change, and the other three rooms until those meet the requirement. So, they'll still be able to, um, operate. They're just only operating in this little section of their building instead of all of their building.
Correct.
Simple, I know I'm simplifying it, making it really simple, but based on our requirement for them, not counting the state's additional requirements, as long as there's an exit door and they are in the process of swapping over the others, if we change it, they would be allowed to still conduct business in the rooms that meet the requirement of the exit.
Correct.
Only a certain amount of kids though, right? Because there's limits to that as well, right?
So, that's up to the state, and that's where the state still has to come in. So, we gave her a directive and said, you can no longer operate in these three classrooms. I think it left her three or four. Um, so the state still has to come in, they will recalculate, it's child per square foot with staff, they do the math, and they'll tell her how many, but they seem to think based on the current load that she has, occupant load, that it shouldn't affect her.
So, that sort of goes back to my question though, if we, she, if she doesn't have a C of O, and now we're bringing it up to 2018, are we gonna be finding other issues?
So, I'm not bringing her up to the 2018. The only reason for the 2018, and this is what I'm saying, is her violations are based on the 2000 international building code. Those are her code violations. The only reason that I mentioned the 2018 minus our amendment. So, as I'm trying to help this facility of trying to figure out, how do we keep you open? How do we not shut you down? This was not, I didn't wanna make the newspaper, Facebook, or any of those things, so trying to figure out how to maintain keeping her open. My initial thought was, let's apply the current code, undergo change of use. However, looking at the amendments, I went, oh, with a zero threshold, there's no, there's no out. So, 2000 code i- is what she's being told to be compliant with. It's the 2018 that I had hoped to help with the out, however, with the amendment, it doesn't help.
Right, so...
But you're operating under the guise that she has a cer, that this building has a certificate of occupancy. If there is no ability to show or produce a certificate of occupancy, because it burnt down with the building, um, that everybody else's certificate of occupancies were in that we seem to be trying to find. If we come to the point where we now have, are saying, you don't actually even have a certificate of occupancy, I think what councilwoman Larson is asking is then, now it's a whole, to us, the way I understand it, is now it's a whole new ballgame. It's like a new business moving into this building, applying for a certificate of occupancy. There hasn't been a certificate of occupancy in the last six months. So, now they are open up to our new current code requirements, which would be 2018, not 20... Not 2000, not even 2003. That's where, that's what I think she's trying to make sure that we understand is, if they don't have that certificate of occupancy, are we now going to apply 2018, which is our current code we're working off of, for everybody else, correct? New buildings and new change of certificate of, new change of use, or, um, there hasn't been a certificate of occupancy, um, current for six months, is that going to then kick in, just in case for giggles and complaints?
If I might, um...
ADA compliance, all, all those other things.
If they are not changing the use of the building, and they're not expanding the footprint of the building, then they, you know, we're not requiring anything different. Putting in the doorways will have to meet the 2018 code as far as how they are constructed, if there's panic hardware, whatever there might have to be. But we only, we would only kick in on an existing building of any kind, um, up current codes, as if they were making significant modifications to the building.
Or they didn't have a certificate of occupancy in the last six months. If the building did not have a certificate of occupancy in the last six months, and someone moves into it, or open, or reopens a bar or anything, if there wasn't a certificate of occupancy within the last six months, they now have to be current code ADA compliance.
We made that change.
We made that change.
Everything has to be compliant. We just had it happen to a bar that hadn't been open in many years, and they went to open, still the same thing they were, they were a bar, and now they're a bar. And they now have, they had to come up to the new codes because it had been more than six months. That is the concern that councilwoman Larson has, is if they can't produce, because it's, I'm assuming on the business owner to produce a certificate of occupancy, and if they can't produce it, then we are going to assume that there was, that they don't have one because they can't produce it. Are they going to have to now meet all of 2018 codes, ADA? I, I, and I get that, we're talking to fire, but now we gotta also understand the big picture, because that's what got us into this hour long, out, more than hour conversation, was the big picture that we forget about because we're so focused on one thing, and we need to look at the big picture.
And I do not disagree with you, except again, to bring it back down to this particular item, it's been a building that's been in continuous use, no change of occupants, or no change of use. It hasn't been vacant or anything else. You're talking about a scenario that is a whole different...
No, I'm talking about her, she has no, she can't produce...
She's in business.
But she can't produce a certificate of occupancy to say that her business should ever even have been allowed to open.
And I cannot answer to past record-keeping or how these things were handled 20 years ago. What I'm saying is now, if all, if they're making just these minor modifications in order to satisfy the state of Arizona, we're not asking the whole building to be changed based on the 2018 code.
But wait a second, I'm gonna back it up for a second.
That's such a contradiction.
A hundred percent a contradiction.
Why, why?
Because if we are telling...
We just did it to the barbecue place.
I can't answer to...
I know, I know you can't, but she can.
This is what we're talking about, when we're talking about consistency and treating everybody the same.
I don't disagree.
And if we're saying you need to have a certificate of occupancy, otherwise if you fail to have a certificate of occupancy, you now have to repeat the process and meet that standard across the board. We can't say, you know what, you, you have to do that, you, no, you come on in here, we're gonna take care of you.
Well, because you know what it's gonna do, and, and when, when we talked about these businesses who go and they do all this unpermitted work, and they kinda just pop up, and then a year later, or whenever, we go through and we, we realize that, hey, they did all this stuff without permits and all this stuff. If we aren't going to say, if, if, I look at this as telling that guy who down the street opened up his business on the low, and we go in there, well, he was an existing business, he had, he had all this stuff, he, how are we gonna go in? This is that, this is that very thin line that we're walking. If, if the business does not have a certificate of occupancy, they cannot produce one, and if we're not putting it on ourselves to help them find it, for whatever reason, and we have no record of it, they were not a legitimate business. So, they now have to meet the 2018 or current code. If she can produce, or anyone can produce their certificate of occupancy, or prove that they had one and it burnt down when the records building burnt down, and that's why we don't have our record, then they don't have to meet the 2018 code because they have been an existing legal business. Without a certificate of occupancy, you are not a legal business, I don't care how long you've been there. If you knew you didn't have a certificate of occupancy and you can't produce one, it's unfortunate, but you weren't a legal business, and if we are going to now issue you a certificate of occupancy, before our fire marshal will sign off on it, and before our building official will sign off on it, they're going to make sure that you meet the code that is required for a certificate of occupancy of any new business, whether it's in a new building or an existing building. Is that not a correct statement? Because that is what we just did to several business owners. And now that's where even more of the frustration comes from, because that is the inconsistency in how we are conducting our day-to-day business that council's not supposed to get involved in, but here we are again, involved in it, and staff gets mad at us, and the public gets upset, or they're cheering us on, whichever it's gonna be tomorrow. Consistency is a requirement, 120% of the time, never can we not be consistent. Because now we are sitting here having a contradicting conversation about, well, they've been here this long, they were an existing business, and I'm, I'm with him on that, but clarification, they don't have a certificate of occupancy, so they weren't an existing business as far as we are concerned with our certificate of occupancies, which makes you an actual legal existing business. Because otherwise, anybody who's been operating a business behind closed doors can come to us and say, hey, I want a certificate of occupancy, and you can't make me meet the 2018 codes. Am I incorrect in that thought process?
I, I don't issue certificates of occupancy for one, so...
I know you don't, but you know in order to get one, they have to meet your requirements.
Yes, so I...
And they have to meet the building officials' requirements. And neither one of you are going to put your reputation on the line, your licensing, your certificates, none of that stuff unless they meet those requirements.
True. So, I will also say that what you're referencing, and I don't have a computer to pull it up, but it, what you're referencing, I think, sit in my fire code as definitions for revocation of a certificate of occupancy with your six months. And there's no way to enforce it through my fire code, because again, the fire code doesn't do certificates of occupancy. But to what Larry was talking about with acting, so, we're trying to right so many wrongs. When you talk about a certificate of occupancy, she wouldn't have been able to get state licensing 20 years ago without proof that she had a certificate of occupancy. The state requires it, so there was documentation somewhere, whether she has it, we don't have it, we've tried to do our research. So, we're acting on behalf that she's never changed ownership, it, it is continuity, right? So, it is not Larry moving out and six months, six weeks later, me moving into Larry's restaurant. It is one continuously operating facility. What we are doing now is, now we know you're either an I four or you're an E, and some 2000 code's gonna apply to the 2018. And so, again, with trying to right the wrong from 2003, she will actually be given whatever path she decides to go down, she will now get a certificate of occupancy, unless one can be provided, but we have...
Which even if she can, let's hope that we just give her an updated one. But it is part of the, of this conversation for this specific business, for this specific change, and that conversation that we, we have half of a conversation, we need to have a whole conversation. Us allowing this, how does it affect the rest of the issues that she may or may not face? And one of them is going to be, if she does not produce a certificate of occupancy, how are we going to look at that business? Are we going to hold that business to the same standard? We have held all the new businesses that just opened their doors, the businesses that have been trying to open their doors. Are we going to hold this one to that same standard? Because all of them have been told they must meet the 2018 code. I know that that is not your department, but we went down a rabbit hole a long time ago, and thankfully, our lawyer has not stopped us from this rabbit hole yet, but I suspect it's coming. And, and I wasn't, I'm, I'm not upset with you, Larry, because you haven't, you weren't part of these decisions, you weren't here. But you know the frustration that I have, because we've had lots of conversations about how we have somebody over here trying to do it right, and we have somebody trying to help them do it right, but I don't want to create another roadblock for this business or a business that's gonna try to come to us tomorrow. And that's why we and councilwoman Larson is really trying to make sure that we all understand, will they be required to meet 2018 code if they don't have a certificate of occupancy? Or will they be asked to just stay with the 2000? That's part of this conversation, because it's all gonna snowball together.
Yeah, so I would still have to defer to the building code official on that. Like I said, your definitions that were adopted into the code as far as the... I said, your definitions that were adopted into the code as far as abandoned and vacant buildings, they're definitions. In the fire code where they sit, there is no section for them to be referenced, for them to actually be enforced. So as far as my fire code is concerned, the six-month rule, it doesn't exist. It's a definition in my book, however, it's not enforceable. I believe, I don't, I'm not sure, I'd have to look this one up, and it's a building code official question anyways. I think the same definitions sit in his building code and not in a chapter or section within the book to make it enforceable, like chapter one, under certificates of occupancy.
The six-month was an amendment that we made.
Correct. And it's in the definitions.
Yeah.
I just wanna say thank you for your patience with dealing with all of our questions tonight. Because I know we've got a million questions and they're not necessarily directed at you. It's just making sure that the process is working and it's working effectively. So I just wanted to say thank you for your patience. Thank you.
I will say that I appreciate Councilmember Cortez bringing up our past issues. And that is one of the reasons why we're trying to bring to you options that may be solutions to businesses, rather than going in and just having hard and firm rules associated with. I do agree, we have to look into it, consider all sides of it. If council would like to table this to the next meeting, we'll bring our building official. If you'd like to vote on it, we'll still come back and bring our building official and have a conversation about it. And remember, you have asked for a complete review of the amendments to the fire code and the building code. So now that we know what you want, we're gonna use this before, and make sure we have all of the documentation before we bring it back. And make sure that we include historical communities like Prescott, like Bisbee, like Tombstone and others, Flagstaff, to make sure that we're comparing them to older Western communities that have adopted these codes so that we can see what amendments they also have. And we'll make sure that we give you complete sections of their amendments as well, so you can see them, read them in their totality.
Either next meeting or the one after. I wanna make sure you have enough time to pull together the appropriate information, so it is not rushed. Thank you. That's so much nicer than I was going to say.
But if we can make sure that we have, like I said, that data from other communities, full definitions, which I know we spoke about them, but it's great to have it for reference. If we can have, yeah, the building official here, the tenant, landlords, I think that's the things that I would like to see when we, when we have this meeting. So that way then we can have a full discussion about, try to look for the CVO in the meantime as well, so if we can find some record of that. So at least we have some guidance as what, what that'll look like moving forward. Maybe a fire plan potentially, work with them. I mean, I would love to see that, too. For this particular, I know this obviously impacts others. I just wanna make sure that the changes that we're making, I apologize, that the changes that we're making are actually going to help. And I know it might for other businesses, but we're sort of pushing this through right now for this particular instance. And I just wanna make sure that we have some type of plan that actually works for them as well.
So are we making a motion here? Or are, like, I think we're at the point where I'm sure everybody would agree with us. We've talked about this longer than, yeah, Mayor.
Just making a motion to table it at this time.
I made that motion about an hour and fifteen minutes ago.
My apologies. Other council members wanted to discuss and I obliged.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D is ordinance number 73224. This is a discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Florence, Arizona, approving and authorizing the exchange of real property in fee estate with substantially equal value between the town of Florence and Florence PG 53 LLC, which is an Arizona limited liability company as described in the attached exhibits A and B, and described herein, authorizing the execution of all documents by the mayor and interim town manager to finalize and close the exchange and the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the exchange of real property contemplated by this ordinance and declaring an emergency. Ms. Garcia.
I'm having him pull up the map that is part of your packet. And go to the second page, please. There we go. So this item is regarding the town-owned property, which is considered-
Sorry. I gotta share it. You're good.
Which is parcel A, that little strip that doesn't come all the way to the corner and kinda goes down and around. It's on the corner of Hunt Highway and Addaway Road. And if you see the well sites that are kind of dotted, it almost looks like it's vertical lines, it says Town of Florence. So what we'll be gaining is we will be gaining B, which is an extension of our water campus that is necessary, as well as we will be given a, we will be also trading for C, which will be a full road that will have us have the ability to access our sites. Right now, if you've ever, if you've ever, so, the building right across the street, you can see it's a river bottom so that you can just get your location. And what our team does right now is they drive our trucks along the canal to be able to access. That's the Skid Canal. And so we drive our trucks onto the Skid Canal versus having access to our site. And so we will not be in the canal right away. Our site will be the width of a road, and it will be safer for our team to be able to travel to and from. It will expand our water sites, and it will take the sites together. What the developer gets out of it is they get the section in section A, which was, the town of Florence purchased from the rail in 2000, and we purchased it for $5,000. The other thing I would like to note is that the property right now is being considered for a commercial project. And they can't move forward with their commercial project without that portion of A. And if they sell, if they sell that to the commercial project, then we won't be at the point to where we can do the land exchange for our road or for B to expand our plant. Now, this has been talked about, I think, for about more than ten years for the exchange. It was at the point where we were drilling a well, we went through, and our well was drilled on, do you remember the name of the property owner? Our, our drill was built, built on someone else's property. We went back and we corrected that, and this will just put our campus back together. I did reach out to the property owner and ask them if I could discuss the fact that that is under contract. And they said, yes, I could discuss the fact that the section that they own, excluding A, is under contract for a Circle K.
Yeah, that's, that was my only question. I was waiting for her to open it up. Go ahead. Am I good? Okay. So my only concern was that obviously we all agree that 79 Hunt Highway needs a total redo. And it's, a lot of it's out of our hands, right? When, my only concern with getting rid of that A is that turn, and needing a turn lane, needing a full signal, the, I mean, that, the whole intersection.
Yeah, the property owner will still have to do a traffic analysis, and they'll still have to do the improvements to the site.
Okay, so that, well, but is, are they gonna have enough room at that point if we're giving up A to be able to do a full, I mean, I feel like that, I just don't want us to be stuck down to the two lanes and not having enough room for a turn lane, or having enough, I mean, that's gonna highly increase the traffic in that area.
Yeah, that, so, so if you look at any area along Hunt Highway, when the developer owns the property, so, let's go back out and let's look at another property. Let's look at the county section. So where the county has four lanes of road, and then it goes to two lanes of road, when the county is building that, they're, the reason why some of that is not going forward because they're waiting for the developers to be able, because there's not development on that side, they're waiting for the developers to do those improvements. And that's what comes, is when you have a development, you require the development to go in to do the improvements and to do a traffic impact analysis to make sure that all the improvements will be there for their site. And so, the reason why they wanna purchase this property is because they can't, they can't sell the full site without having that little weird piece included in.
I'm, I'm in complete agreement with all of that. That sounds great. I love all of that. My concern is that we've already done a lot of the traffic studies and we've already worked with ADOT on this corner. So as much as they would be obviously responsible for doing a traffic study, it's working with ADOT.
Yeah, this, this land was not purchased for a, this land was not purchased for traffic improvements. When you go back and you read the property, it says that we purchased seven point, or .731 acres for a potential fire or substation. One, it won't, it, it's not the right size to be a potential fire substation. We don't have a need to access this point based on where our current fire and police departments are located. Inside of our development agreements, we have future sites for fire and police locations. So this would just merely be, is if the council wants to keep this site, to do something else with it, then we can definitely do that. But this is part of our land exchange to be able to enhance our water campus.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you for answering.
I would like our liaisons for planning and zoning to keep this in the back of their mind when this commercial development comes before planning and zoning, to remember that we need to require those improvements at the intersection of 79 in order for the development to happen there.
Most definitely. And, and remember, this is the site also, that we are corner of Hunt Highway and 79, also looking for future signalization.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Would you say future what?
Signalization.
Signal.
Mm-hmm.
I think the question was answered, but going to these transportation meetings and listening to what the state is offering as far as money and having right-of-ways purchased so that the state can say, okay, you're ready for the next step in construction, it's almost like we're giving away something that we have already, and then turn around and we're gonna have to purchase right-of-ways to widen that intersection.
Well, remember, when a developer develops that side of the street, because it's undeveloped, the town of Florence goes in and they say, these are the requirements for you to come in to be able to develop. So if it was an already developed area, so say, a highwayer's coming into an already developed area, then they have to, and say they're going to widen the street, they go in and purchase the right-of-way. If our areas that are already developed, we purchase the right-of-way. And so if it's just going to be a street that's not on, I wish Mr. Solis was here, but he had a family emergency, he could explain it much better than I. But in areas to where the developer's developing, they are required to go through and put in those streets. So we could take in Bisbee Ranch that is over by my subdivision, and you can see that the improvements and the widening that they have done for their subdivision because it was a requirement. You could look at Western Crossing and see that that developer is going in and working, getting their, they've got their ADOT permits and you see the cones up, and they're going in and widening that street, and they're going in and they're creating that turn lane.
Are we gonna require the developer to do both roads as far as, because Hunt Highway basically belongs to us. 79 is a state highway. Are they gonna have to do improvements on both roads?
I assume that, I don't know their layout or how their layout works, but it's the-
If, if that's the case, then why didn't we have ALA do the same thing on Hunt Highway on their side? Because that, they should have done the same road. They should have done their expansion of Hunt Highway on that side of the road, and that never occurred. So that's something I'm trying to avoid here.
Is that four lanes on Hunt Highway?
At that immediate port, part, yes. At that immediate section right there, but it had gone from smaller to bigger.
That's the section that goes down into the two lanes.
Okay.
Just past the traffic light.
Okay. We can note that for development, and we can talk about it with the people who are going to be purchasing it as well.
Just to piggyback off of that, the, my thoughts are, is when, when a developer comes in and say he purchases this parcel and he's gonna put in a Circle K, and we say that you have to do a traffic study and you have to do road improvements, I'm thinking, if I'm driving down the road, the road improvements would be like a little jut-off area for them to drive into the parking lot, not a full expansion and redesign of a corner, including a traffic signal. And I think that's where I just wanna make sure that we're fully covering the discussion that I think I wanna have right now, which is, we've already planned this out with ADOT, we've already discussed this, we were waiting on the bridge to be completed. Bridge has been completed. We're aware this corner and this intersection needs to be completed. And my concern isn't with selling the property as much as it is that I don't want us to say, oh, yeah, they're gonna do roadway improvements, and all they mean is a little jut-out so you can get into their parking lot. What I'm saying today is that if we're gonna do a project of any scale, really, I don't care if it's a Circle K or a supermarket, if anything's going on that corner, it already needs a stoplight, a complete redesign, a turn signal or a turn lane. So, and I don't, I don't know if that is even in the scope of what a developer or business would even do, because we've already talked about those plans. So I just either want to see us take the initiative to get those across the finish line, or I wanna see us have that already scoped out.
The signalization the town of Florence has committed to, that would not change, that's already in the books. But I was hoping they could find Larry so he could discuss the planning process and what happens when they go through the planning process. If Larry's still in the room, we'll have him talk about it. He's not in the room?
No, he went outside the fire.
Okay. All right. And so, again, Mr. Solis had an emergency tonight, or he could explain the roadway issues. It's not my area of expertise. So if, there, this is on a strict timeline as well.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm okay with moving forward with it. I just think that I would feel better knowing that we are fully committed to redoing that corner, because that is something we've already committed to with ADOT. We already decided and designed it. I just wanna make sure that that becomes a priority, especially at this point.
Been talking about it for a decade.
Yeah. It's not about the development or the land switch as much as it's, we've already talked about it, committed to it, planned for it. Let's actually get our butts on the ground and start working on it.
I'm, I'm texting Mr. Solis to see if I can put him on speakerphone to see if he can answer your questions. I just wanna make sure that we're answering it correctly so that we're giving you the best information possible.
What is our timeline, Lisa?
Um, the current deal that is on the table is a deal that has to occur within this month. And that means all escrow documents and everything that needs to take place. So this, this, tonight's action is the start of it, and then we have to go through, if council would say yes, then we have to go through the escrow and everything that would be required, and it would have to close out by, by the end of January.
There's no way that this will hinder a light and the expansion of that street?
No.
Correct?
Correct.
That's really what our council is concerned with. As long as it is not going to hinder the expansion of that street and the light, because we have been working-
Yeah.
-over the past few years with ADOT, the county and us.
Yeah, we're gonna hold you to it.
And I have to also say that just because we go through the land sale, doesn't mean that it's not a site that would, like, I have not gotten a date on when the site will be constructed. So, like, Fries goes in sometimes and they purchase up land that are going to be future sites. I do not know the dates that this would actually go through. We have not been given those kind of details. And again, I asked permission from the property owner to disclose that it would be, that they're currently talking with a Circle K. And that's the information that they gave us to be able to discuss with council tonight.
Either way, we need that traffic signal completed.
Yes.
I think that's the point. Just, yeah, need to get that started.
And what I can do, too, is you can direct me to verify it. And if it is not, as I've said, we'll bring it back to the next meeting versus saying it's true. But yes, we were told that it would not hinder it in any way.
And it also can be discussed during planning and zoning when they're getting their permits for that site.
Well, not until they, so they have to purchase it, and then they have to put in plans for the site. And then once they put in plans for the site, then it goes through the requirements. So say that, say that we exchange property and somebody bought it, but they're not going to develop it for five years. They would develop it underneath the code that would be adopted by the town five years from now, not today. So that's what I meant when I said I didn't know when the construction would- So that's what I meant when I said I didn't know when the construction would actually occur.
So to word that, Lisa, would we say that we approve ordinance 723-24 with the understanding that it does not hinder the traffic signal and-
Future expansion.
Future expansion?
Yes.
Would that be approved? Okay, well then, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
All in favor? Or, or second?
Second.
All in favor?
I got second.
All opposed? Motion carries. I heard you, Lisa. Item A is discussion and possible approval of the annual financial statements for the fiscal year 2022-23. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Yes. Again, I'll introduce Ben Herr, our auditor that has audited both CFDs, number one and two. These are required, statutorily required, and we also submit these to various financing agencies and to the municipal board via Emma. So he's here tonight to do a short presentation on the two facility districts.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Good to know. Madam Mayors, Vice Mayors, and the council members, I'm here to present the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one, for the audited financial statements. We have performed the audit of the financial statements of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one, and we have issued the two reports here. One is the financial statements audit and the second report is report to the Board of Basically, our opinion on the audit of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one, is a modified opinion, which means financial statements are presented fairly on our matured aspect in accordance with GAAP, and we did not have come across any deficiencies, either mature weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Again, second report is our communications to the board members, basically noted what had happened during their audits. We did not have any difficulties, encounters in performing of our audit, and we did not have any disagreement with the management from this audit. That is the end of my presentation for the Community Facilities District, number one.
Council, any questions or comments?
Thank you for being so patient with us tonight. We're sorry.
No, 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 this was kinda-
Thank you to everybody for sticking it out with us tonight.
All right. And for the possible approval component, we need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the annual financial statement of fiscal year 2022-23 for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion approval, disapproval to approve the November 20th, 2023 special meeting minutes. Ms. Garcia?
The minutes are in the packet.
Any questions or comments by council? Seeing none, we need a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the special meeting minutes from November 20th, 23.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community, or from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one?
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item A is discussion and possible approval of the annual financial statement for fiscal year 2223. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Again, I'll turn this over to Mr. Herr for presentation.
Madam Mayors, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm here to present the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number two, audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2023. We have performed our audit in accordance with the GAAP, and then here is our reports to the, to you. The first report is the audited summary results of financial statements audit we have performed. Second report is the report to the Board of Directors as required by the professional standard. As you noted that we have performed our audit and issued a modified opinion on Community Facility District, number two, which means the financial statements are presented fairly on matured aspects in accordance with the GAAP, and we do not have any deficiencies noted during the audit. Again, we actually have here is a report to the Board of Directors to describe what had happened during the audit procedures. We did not have any difficulties, encounters in performing of our audit. We did not have any disagreements with the management on the presentations. That is the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Herr?
I just appreciate you.
All right. We need a possible approval. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion approval, disapproval to approve the September 18th, 2023 special meeting. Ms. Garcia?
Minutes have been issued to the council.
Thank you so much. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one?
So moved.
Second.
Um, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Town manager report?
Mayor, members of council, I have to, one, applaud you for your conversation tonight. It's very helpful to not only the town staff, but it's also helpful to the citizens to understand and the business owners to understand how much you struggle and how much you wanna do the right thing for the community. We all appreciate it. And, and your correct past issues have to be corrected and we have to move forward for the betterment of all in Florence, and we strive to make sure that that's happening and is happening appropriately. In the manager's report that I presented to you, I went through the work session items and noticed that our audit is underway with community development and we look to have a formal audit come out soon. The town manager search, you've all went through and done your interviews. The position is out and it does close on January 29th. I feel like that's gonna be a very exceptional day for the town of Florence and in finding our new town manager. It has special meaning to me. That's my birthday, so that's the best gift we can get, is getting a manager in place to lead this team. Staffing changes, I did want to thank Harvey Kraus for his experience that he did provide the town, and I did wanna thank Larry for coming back aboard and being part of our team. While it's only temporary, temporary, Larry does bring a breadth of knowledge, not only in our community and in our codes, but how council would like to implement those codes. And he does have a very good working relationship with the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the H-TAC. So we're looking forward to making sure that we are applying the codes per council standards as well as negotiating future development agreements with, with the intent of the council. I also wanna go in and note that as part of the state, we're all watching what's happening with the state after the flat tax was adopted. And as you've seen on the news, the state is in a position to where they are coming at the end of the year with a huge deficit. We need to be paying attention and making sure that our state's shared revenues are not impacted by there. So anytime you get a chance to talk to a senator or a house member, anyone at the state level, please talk about local, and how sometimes when we're local and rural jurisdictions, that sometimes our shared revenues are all that we have that sustain us. So a loss in shared revenue is a big loss for our future and what we can do for our citizens. I also wanted to talk about the town clerk's office and let you know that our election packets are still out. We do have two people who are eligible to circulate petitions. One is for a mayor candidate and one is for a council candidate. So we do have two petitions that, that are, that, two people that are able to circulate petitions. And as part of our records project, the clerk is undergoing helping the community development, research certificate of occupancies, and to put them into our Laserfish software so everyone can have access to them. We're committed to going through and finding those, and when there is questions about certificate of occupants, we are going back in and we're pulling business licenses that show that planning and zoning signed off on the zoning, which should include a check of the conditional, of the certificate of occupancy to make sure that if we don't have them in place, we're gonna look at other materials that is in our records to make sure we're doing right by the businesses. And again, I do understand that everyone can be very passionate on their issues, but staff, we're passionate with council and you set the directions. We're here to meet your needs and make sure that we're operating underneath the council's parameters that they set in place with us by setting the vision and the policies for us to act on and making sure that we apply them unilaterally across the board. And, and that's what our goal is. So I just wanted to thank you for your service tonight and thank you for spending the time taking and having those hard conversations.
Thank you. Department head reports, is there any member of council that has any questions or comments for department head reports?
I do. Go ahead.
Well, I do, but then I just realized unless Ms. Garcia can assist us with the C Click Fix, we continue to have multiple complaints about it. There is, when we came up with this program or decided to do this, I had expressed some concerns as far as people's privacy, as far as people's legal rights to enjoy their property, and then people's rights as the public to know the process and how it's going on the properties that have been notated as being non-code compliant for whatever reason. And so as I'm watching C Click Fix and I'm watching the activity that's going on, and it, like a lot of social media, becomes very targeted and hostile at times, and it's unfortunate that people feel that they can talk to other people the way that they have been talking to each other on that website. And what I don't want us to do is be the facilitator of those kind of conversations. I don't want us to allow any of our community members to be bullied by another community member simply over whatever the issue is with a specific property, but I also want us to understand that that property owner is who is ultimately responsible and that the answer and the solution is owed to the property owner. So even though I may express my concerns over a certain property, I have no legal right to know the process beyond what is public as far as we have 10 steps or whatever it is. I don't have the right to call and say where in the process are they. That is, in my opinion, that owner's business and the town, and our legal department's business, and, and I don't feel comfortable with us making it a conversation where we are now talking about, well, they were cited and then now they've got a legal court date. We need to find a better way to keep people informed, but also respect the property owner and their rights to have conversations with our staff to remedy the issues without having to have it in a public forum with people who are attacking them, calling them names, saying they live like pigs or anything like that. I've seen some horrible things on there and it concerns me because we are the town of Florence and that's our website, that's our prop, thing that we put out for people. So with C Click Fix, I feel like we desperately need to have a conversation as council, how we want to move forward with that program, changes that we wanna be, that we wanna see made in that program as far as who can comment, who can then continue to have the conversation once the report is made, not trying to cut anybody out of the process, but also making sure that everyone is receiving a respect and being treated fairly and that everybody feels like they're valued as a citizen of this community, because even if your property is one of those that is being complained about, we still value you as a resident. So I would just like to request that council have yet again another meeting, work session, whatever it needs to be, to where we can have an open dialogue conversation about C Click Fix and changes that need to be made to that entirety of sometimes a mess.
Yes. And your staff does agree, we've been working on policies on C Click Fix. Hopefully, we're gonna have them before you at your very next meeting, and we're looking at best practices policies. So in a best practices policy, C Click Fix is not considered a public forum like social media is or Facebook is or anything in that nature. So we're looking at C Click Fix as a complaint platform where citizens are allowed to complain to the town of Florence. And so what we're going to do is go through and create levels of how and when property owners would be able, or how or when people would be able to have open access. So let's say it's a town of Florence business or a town of Florence property or a pothole or a street light, those type of things where they're coming and telling us to fix our issues, they will allow for open communication because we are the property owner. And then going in and creating a more narrow vision for things that would be considered property owner rights and things that would be considered of whether or not they need to go through the process. The other thing we need to clarify is we've now come upon people trying to make complaints to the police department on C Click Fix. So we need to go in and we need to do some clarifications of what should and should not be going through C Click, C Click Fix and to make sure that if somebody's putting an emergency call through C Click Fix, he's looking at it to make sure that it doesn't go seven days before someone registers it. So you're going to have that come before you and I imagine it's gonna be a very fun evening for all of us.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna go ahead to our call to the public. I see a hand raised. Courtney Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, are you there?
Doesn't show, she's muted.
We can't hear her, but you can see what she's-
Yeah, you can see her mic moving like she's talking.
We can't hear you. We can read your transcript.
Maybe try mute, Courtney, maybe try muting yourself and then unmute yourself again.
Okay, she's muted.
No, we can't hear you, Courtney. No, we can read your transcript. If you speak, we'll read it. public with a Zoom link and an opportunity for public participation. And I believe that has already been brought up by a few members of council for a future discussion, so we will be discussing that moving forward. Thank you, and I apologize for our sound not working.
Is she good?
Yep, she's good. She said thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Okay. Call to the council. Council member Cortez.
Sorry, I was writing a note. So first, I would like to, and of course, our chief left too. I wanted to thank the police department for allowing me- I wanted to thank the police department for allowing me to participate again in their Christmas present event. We wrapped a lot of gifts, and this year, our community was blessed by their donor, and they had more gifts than we could even imagine to hand out. And because of that, we were able to help families last minute and ensure that they got gifts. And there is still an abundance left over that the police department and our community programs will figure out a way to make sure that those are utilized. There was lots of games and puzzles and things that can get donated to our library. So if they haven't reached out to you, I did ask them to please reach out to you to see how you might be able to utilize some of those items in the libraries, the daycares, the school, to reach out to those people. And then they got, of course, a lot of stuffed animals to add to that. I did have questions while I was there, just in general, asking about, I know that our fire department does a toy drive. We've got all these different people doing toy drives and then handing out to our community in need. And I was wanting to make sure that while we're doing that, and as great as it is that everybody is doing something like that, that we're not missing someone because there are so many people doing the same thing. That is there a way that even though each department is kind of doing their own thing, can we have at town hall or somewhere where there's almost like a centralized wish list so that we can ensure that every family who is in need gets taken care of? Because like I said, the police department had tons of gifts left over, and I know the fire department had a lot of gifts, but I don't know if they had more than they needed as well. And if you had a shortfall, it would have been good for you to know that the police department had all these extras or that the coffee shop had done a drive also and had gifts to donate. And I did see that there were some organizations that had donations made to them and nowhere to give them because they were kind of late on getting them. And we always have a need, there's even a Christmas Eve need. There's people that all of a sudden realize that they have a need. And so I want to make sure that everybody in our community is able to participate and receive those blessings. I wanted to thank everybody that was here for staying and, and, and listening to us and sticking it out with us because this was a long evening of some tough conversations. And so I just want to make sure that everybody knows we appreciate them. I want to tell our town manager of the future, we are a fantastic place to work. Our council is not always cantankerous, that we are a lovely council, and that we are excited to meet you and excited for you to come and help us lead our town into the future. And we've made some good position placements in the meantime while we're waiting for you. And those members of our staff are also excited to move forward and share ideas and help grow our town. So I'm excited about that, so can't wait to meet you. And then I wanted to talk about, I was contacted today by one of our community members that is with one of our churches, and on January 17th, we have the opportunity to host MASH, which I don't actually know what the acronym means. Councilwoman Buchalato might be able to expand when it gets down to her. But they will be bringing two semis to hopefully our park parking lot, Heritage Park. I'm working with parks to make sure that this can happen. One semi alone will be a freezer semi, a cold semi, and the other one will be, it can be anything from produce to diapers to paper goods. It is all donated and will be for our community and surrounding areas to come and accept those blessings, excuse me, accept those blessings as well. So I look forward for this event. I think our community and there are a lot of people in need that are going to be excited for this and to be able to receive any kind of gift right now is a big deal. So I'm excited, look forward for that. We'll get more information out as far as the exact times, but I'm talking two semis. One of them just full of, it can, it's going to be like meats and cheeses and all that stuff that people need to fill their freezers and their refrigerators. And then I think that is it, that's it.
All right, thank you. Council member Maldonado?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a good and happy new year and was safe. Just welcome everybody back for this new year. I look forward next month, I guess, with some of my other council member counterparts and meeting up with the Senator Wendy Rogers up in Phoenix at her office. And if anybody has anything for us that'd like to be brought up, just let us know before then. 17th of February, let your friends know about the 7th Annual Car Show here in Florence. And 3rd Fridays, just try to promote that as much as possible to all your friends and family. We've been having nice weather, so hopefully we're blessed with, with good weather also. And if people are looking for something new to do this year and you're looking for something to fill your time, look into one of the non-for-profits. Become a, a member of one of these non-for-profits and give your time where you can and try to be valuable and try to be resourceful. Or if you want to become part of some sort of board or something, look into different things and giving back to the community. It's very humbling when, when we do that, stuff like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Council member Larson?
You guys already stole a lot of them, but I wanted to say that on Christmas, one of the best photos I saw was, we have up, up in Anthem, there's a street. Candy Cane Lane, I think that is what they call it. Oh, okay, well. Yeah. That was called. Candy Cane Lane. And one of the most endearing photos I saw was a police officer that stopped and was playing with some kids in the fake snow. And I thought that was adorable because it was Christmas Eve. And I just wanted to bring that up because that's sort of just reminds me of like the, the things that we love and value most about our community is the ability for us to come together, especially like you said, during Christmas or the holidays and really enjoy the company of each other and really humanize each other. So as much as we might have our disagreements or, or things that we want to discuss or questions or concerns, really at the core, we have this deep love for our community, and I think it shows. So that was the point in bringing that up. I'm glad everyone had a happy, safe new year and that we are moving full steam ahead at this point. I think that especially going into this year, we're gonna, you know, we don't want to hold back on getting boots on the ground and getting some of these projects completed. It's a final stretch for some of us, and we want to make sure that we get things across the finish line. So we're excited to see what this next year holds.
Thank you. Council member Neil?
Number one, the fellow that came to give the financial, can we put his stuff together next time? If he ever come back, because I don't think he's ever going to come back. Also, can we get his address so I can buy him a case of beer? Real quick, I had a talk with Courtney Ramirez, and I've always said that I don't believe that we should do anything in private. I think everything should be out except for lawsuits and things like that. But our meetings should be open to the public, they are. But Zooming them for people that can't make it, I think is a good idea. I did talk to her about that, we had actually quite a long conversation, and we talked about a couple of things. But that was one thing I definitely wanted to, to say that I totally backed Zooming or doing exactly our meetings that we do for our regular meetings for our work sessions. I also want to say to, if anyone is still watching or here, please put input into the multicultural center. We really want this to be an entire Florence project. For people that grew up here, there's stuff that mainly for me is stuff that I didn't have when I was a child growing up here. For people that moved here, maybe there's something that from where you came from that could offer input to what we're doing with this. And, and, and everybody's input is very welcomed. Lastly, I would like to say that my heart goes out horribly to some Florence families. Number one, the Tempton family. Number two, special because I consider these cats my little brothers, Piero and Paolo, the Buchalato family. And to my own family for losses that hurt the entire town. God bless y'all, God be with y'all families and mine. Go Gophers.
I'll keep mine short and sweet tonight. I just wanted to, I just completely forgot what I was going to say. You threw me off. No, it's okay, no, that's good. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for putting together a really good agenda. It's very informative, all the, all the reports in there. I didn't really have a lot of questions, and I haven't had a lot of questions lately. So, I mean, you guys are doing great, and I appreciate it. The other thing was if we haven't locked down the two spots for the Michelle Gallagher tournament, the fees go up February 17th, I believe. So we might, might want to lock those in at 2:25. And I hope everybody has a very prosperous 2024. Thank you.
And vice mayor?
I'm just ready to see some of these CIP projects for '24 come to fruition. So all I say is let's get to building some roads and intersections and make this town beautiful.
Everything that I have has already been stated, so at this time, need a motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.